Morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, July sixteenth Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at nine thirty-five. A M. First item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Seeing none, can we get a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Chamsik moves to approve the agenda as presented. We will call the question, all in favor?
I am.
Motion carried. Eight and oh. Next item is the approval of the minutes from our June eighteenth Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any amendments required? Seeing none, can we get a motion to approve? Counselor Minz has made a motion to approve as presented. Call the question, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried, seven and one. Our delegation is scheduled for ten thirty this morning, so we will skip to item five point one, which is our action item list. It begins on page twenty-four of your agenda package. Are there any questions pertaining to the action item list that was included in our agenda package? I would like to note that the action item list is now only four pages long. I believe it was twelve plus when we first began seeing the action item list. So thank you to administration for working to narrow that down. Were there any questions pertaining to the action item list? Reeve Hall.
I'm wondering if an update on, uh, so page twenty-six, C C twenty-four, one, five, three, can be prepared for the next Committee of the Whole Meeting?
So, hold on, C C twenty-four, one, five, three?
Yeah.
Which is the legal engineering assessment?
Yeah, it was a closed session item, so I'm just hoping that for next time, we could have an update on that.
And administration, would that be possible? Thank you. So we will see an update on that item at the next Committee of the Whole Meeting. Any further questions pertaining to the action item list? Counselor Holland?
Thank you, on page twenty-six as well, C C two, four, seven, zero. I think that's complete, but just wanted to confirm.
Two, four, seven, zero, which is to add Minook County Community Club as an additional named insured under the county insurance policy?
Madam Chair, it's not confirmed. There's some paperwork on the group's end that they have to finish.
Thank you.
Counselor Chamsik?
Also the remover of C C twenty-four, three, sixteen. Yes, it's complete.
Twenty-four, three, which page is that on?
Twenty-eight, the first one.
Page twenty-eight. Uh, C C twenty-four, three, sixteen, I can confirm that that item is complete. Which was to direct the Reeve and/or Deputy Reeve to deliver coffee and donuts to the staff at the Boyle Healthcare Center. Are there any other questions, Counselor Holland?
Page twenty-five, six, six, four, three, one.
You see two, four, three, one, which was the C A O evaluation?
Still on the list.
It's still on the list, it's not done.
As a follow-up, are we, um, looking at a date we can complete that?
Ask for an update for that for the next Committee of the Whole Meeting? Twenty-four dash thirty-one? Any other questions pertaining to the action item list? Seeing none, can we get a motion to accept as information, Counselor Cromwell? Call the question, all in favor? Motion carried, eight and oh. Next item on our agenda is item five point two, which is the C A O update. Were there any questions for the C A O pertaining to his update? Counselor Holland?
Thank you, um, just with regards to the legal items, um, will updates be coming in close on those?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to provide an updating close.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Holland, would you like to accept the report for information? Thank you. We'll call the question on the adoption of the motion to accept the report as information, all in favor?
I.
Motion carried, eight and oh. Next item on our agenda is the department updates. We will start with the Corporate Services Department update on page thirty-one of your agenda package. Are there any questions for the Director of Corporate Services? Reeve Hall?
Uh, on page thirty-four, with the accounts receivable, again, a question, are we still providing services to those customers who have over sixty-day account balances?
Uh, through the, through the, the chair. Uh, this is regarding the outstanding accounts, ninety, ninety days plus.
Uh, the bottom chart. Yeah, so the question is, are we still providing service to anybody with a balance greater than sixty days?
Um, excuse me, through the chair, I need to follow up on that. We are still sending monthly statements, and I do know that majority of the accounts are truck fills. There's a few large ones that are fire, uh, recovery related that we're also following up on. And later on in the agenda, we do have, um, a process and procedure that we'd like to introduce to, to recover some of these receivables through the general accounts.
Thank you, Director. Any further questions for the Director of Corporate Services, Counselor Holland?
Thank you, um. Just curious for an upcoming possibility, uh, next year, under grants. Um, we learned that there is a possibility that F C M, uh, if you have a, a lower population in your municipality, that you may be eligible for a subsidy to attend F C M. So I was just wondering if that's something we could, um, possibly look into, or if we know more information on.
Sorry, that's an F C M grant where?
Yeah, they, they mentioned in F C M that there possibly could be a subsidy to attend.
Yeah.
So just wondering if that's something you could get more information of. Please.
Yes, through the chair, yes, we'll follow up on that and report back to council on that subsidy grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have one more question.
So that's to adjust, to attend their conference, or, perfect, thank you.
I think it's in Saskatchewan next year, if I'm not mistaken. Ottawa, sorry, okay. One more question, um, on page thirty-three, under the taxation chart. I was just curious, um, with regards to the tax installment program, so the monthly payments that folks choose to make, how does that factor into this particular, chart for, um, outstanding notes?
Well, obviously, I'm gonna have to follow up with our tax, um, clerk, but from my understanding is it is factored in there. We, we take the payments and to do the credits and the, and the debits in there, so we do have quite a few people on tip. It is factored in there.
So I'm wondering then if the receivables really are showing, you know, outstanding because people are, you know, their payments are being made every day, but this might not necessarily reflect that.
Yes, through, through the chair, it just depends on which day we're printing the report. So at this time, of course, it's the end of the month.
Something to keep in mind when we're looking at the chart.
Absolutely, appreciate that, thank you.
Counselor Gerlach?
Yeah, kind of in regard to the water, Holland, water truck, uh, billings, uh, is there some way we could get them paying in advance for the water? I know we had a boiler business and we had to buy our water in advance all the time, as opposed to, we never were able to procure water without paying for it upfront. Sure would save a lot of hassle chasing people to get to pay.
You have any response to that, I'm not sure of the process. We're paying in advance for truck bills?
Madam Chair, we're happy to look into that and bring a report back on how we're doing the, the billing and some of the, uh, maybe some of the quirks of our system as compared to others, um, especially as it relates to coin op. Maybe this, this council's already dealt with that, but a lot of places have gone, gone away from coin op, but this place remains with coin op, which is has challenges, so we're happy to bring back some, an update council, how our procedure might vary from others, let's put it that way.
Thank you, were there any? Counselor Chamsik? Do you have a hand up, okay, Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you, through the chair to the director. On the table on page thirty-two, apprehended too early in Diet Coke world and for my brain, but under emergency operations, you have in the description, food for first responders, contracted equipment for firefighter, sorry, for fire, fighting fires, Athabasca firefighter wages, but then two lines down, you have mutual aid cost from town and village. What is the distinction on the Athabasca firefighter wages versus the mutual aid cost?
With the chair, I'll have to follow up and send council, um, message on that. I'm not a hundred percent sure at this time what the difference is in the grant applications.
C A O, are you able to?
Madam Chair, the first line is specific to the, I think that's the Jackfish Lake Fire Disaster Relief Program. I can't speak to the third line, I know the first line is the Jackfish Lake, and that's your disaster relief grant application. So we'll have to follow up on the third line to tell you what that one is.
Okay, and then if, follow up, please, Madam Chair, can I assume then that when it says Athabasca firefighter wages, are we talking Athabasca Town, not Athabasca County?
Madam Chair, I'd have to clarify that, uh, but I understood those were all paid anyway, so I, uh, we'll clarify that for you.
Thank you. Any further questions for this Director? Seeing none? Let's move on to the Infrastructure Services Department update on page thirty-five of your agenda package. Are there any questions for the Director? Infrastructure. Page thirty-five. Good? Counselor Cromwell?
Not a question per se, but I would like to, through the chair to the director and through the director to her staff, compliment them on all the hard work they've been out there doing. I know for a fact, I've seen Chris probably four hundred times on every different county road we, we have under our control. And for a fact, I know he's running quite a lot of miles out there, as well as many other staff, so please pass on a thanks for a very rough start of the season, how your staff are doing, thank you kindly.
Counselor Minz?
I guess, uh, a, a few things here, um. Patch gravel completed. I don't think we ever actually complete patch gravel, do we? It's, it's just the comment is like, it just sing all of a sudden.
Through the chair to, uh, Counselor Minz, uh, the planned portion of patching has been completed, but no, patching is never, ever done.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. Uh, crack ceiling, how did the contractor get chased off? That's what I really, I don't understand that one.
Through the chair to Counselor Minz and all of council, uh, there was an irate rate pair in one of the subdivisions and, uh, it was apparently quite harsh treatment. I wasn't there and we haven't filed a statement, they wished to not lay any reports, but they did end up leaving because of the way they were being spoken to.
Oh. Yeah, that's too bad when you're trying to improve something and people don't see the benefit of what we're trying to do out there. Um. Don't you approach six, six, five, repair two C M Ps, did we steal pipes when we're when we're, uh, putting them back, just due to the beaver, beaver problems?
Sorry, through the chair, what page?
Uh, word. Let's go back to that. It was, uh, that's where I'll be in trouble here. It's, uh,
Oh, thirty-six. Right at the top, sorry.
Yeah.
Um. Yes, uh, agricultural services and public works have had to work quite closely. Um, we really do need to train them to start working to our advantage as opposed to working against us.
Yeah, you betcha, so, so agriculture is working with, with the, the they're screening the ends of the pipes and stuff like that?
Yes, through the chair, they are.
Yeah.
Uh, in fact, we have had the welder building extra screens due to the numbers at the moment, so.
Okay. It sounds good, so they were able to get into them, them, uh, them two, or the, the one pipe on the causeway? The beavers were able to get into them pipes?
Through the chair to Counselor Minz, I believe in that situation, um, somebody relieved us of the screens at one end, so.
Yes. Yeah. So two graders were hauled into Brad Tractor, um, for, uh, for repairs and that, I'm just wondering, are we, did we receive backup graders? Regarding that, are we, are we getting paid or, or?
Through the chair, the graders went in one at a time, we had a backup grader on site from them.
From them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. The other thing I was wondering about a maintenance grader, this is off, this is off the hip here. We, we still have one maintenance grader running around with a wing on it.
Uh, through the chair, we've had multiple failures of equipment this year, this bear has run and we have not de-winged it, it just went sent it out to work, so.
Yeah, but we have one actually that's out in the out in the field, a regular grader, regular maintenance grader that still has a wing on it. And I'm just wondering why, Area thirteen.
Uh, through the chair, I'll have to check on that for you, I apologize.
It just, we, we, we go through the soft periods, uh, springtime. Now we're into summer maintenance and not, and to leave a wing on the, on the graders. Odd. This is not, not cool in my head, from my thoughts, saying.
Okay.
Um. I guess that's, it's, uh, just getting into the, to the, uh, oh, whatever we're doing out here, the
Landscaping?
Landscaping, there we are. Um, are we putting a new flagpole here?
Through the chair to Counselor Minz, yes, so our municipal flag can fly.
Oh, okay, because I didn't think that we were gonna do a third flagpole.
This would solely be for the municipal flag, you have a, a large quantity in stock, we have discovered, that has not been hung, so.
Okay. As long as we don't get into a predicament where people want to change our municipal flag for, do we, do we have a policy on that for some other flags?
We should probably have a policy.
Yeah, we need a policy, I think, to, to make sure we don't start flipping flags or?
We'll, we'll bring a policy to you next.
Perfect, thank you. Uh. The, the repair on the fire hydrant out here last Friday, and that, is that through, i- is that through Athabasca County, or is that through the town?
Through the chair to Counselor Minz, that is Athabasca County property. So it is through us.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't the work on the C C or something like that, it was?
No, it was on the actual hydrant, sir.
Oh, okay. Ring of death.
Thank you. Counselor Holland?
Thank you for answering all those questions, I had to answer, that's awesome. Um, just curious with regards to the page thirty-six, it mentioned, um, uh, lack of manpower, um, et cetera, that's impeded some services, so just curious if manpower is still an issue, um, or has that been resolved? Do we have enough resources, do you need more resources, all of those things?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Holland, uh, we are tracking, um, for budgetary purposes, what we have had in the past versus what we currently have, uh, to be able to bring a, a, a correct answer to you for budget deliberations.
Okay, thank you very much. If I may, um. One of the large mowing tractors, again, page thirty-six, caught fire July eighth, um. Are we contracting mowers to keep up, or is that, how is that even?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Holland, it wasn't a loss, it was just, it caught, uh, due to dust and it was put out, so it's running.
Oh, awesome, okay, so no loss there.
And the operator is okay?
Yes, thank you.
Um, and, um, the bridge crew continuing to do bridge cleaning and washing. And just considering the expense of, of that, as we noticed the last time around, um, how are we preventing more of the of the excess gravel to be added on, back on top of these bridges?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Holland, grader operators are, are expected to not put gravel onto the bridges when they're grading. Uh, that has been reiterated multiple times, but we have also done a lack of maintenance over the years, I believe, on the bridges, and so it's been prioritized now, awesome.
Thank you very much, um, and I believe, oh, just one other quick question, the F C M grant, we, uh, pre-application submitted for the analysis of green options for the new shop project, are there any other grant opportunities that are being sought for the, uh, new build?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Holland, there are possible ones that we can be looking at, but they would be sequential after the first one would be finished, so.
Awesome, thank you, oh, and I did have one more quick one. Actually, two more quick ones, sorry, I flipped the page, they weren't highlighted. Um, fire hydrants and hamlets, are they all up to speed and snuff, and do we have enough?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Holland, I will answer no, certainly not enough, especially in the grassland area, we're looking at pressure. Um, currently, our utility operator is, uh, going through and checking all of the fire hydrants, and that was where we discovered the issue out front here. Uh, so there was two replaced in Collinton, uh, before we, uh, did this one, so we're looking at upgrading things so that they are safe and functional.
Awesome, thank you so much. And then in, on page thirty-nine, under Recreation Services, um, I noticed Jackfish Lake Campground not mentioned here, but I'm just curious if there's an update as to what is happening out there, the boat, uh, launch dock is still sitting on the, um, the shoreline, and it's broken, um, there's other issues, signs are shot up, um, all kinds of different things.
Uh, currently, the team is actually out trying to fix the Jackfish Lake Dock this morning, um. We have been, because our campgrounds are constantly full, we are having issues with, uh, being able to get in and mow, uh, as people don't want to be displaced when we get there, and then they're treating, uh, treating staff rather badly. Um, and then they're complaining that it's not mowed, however, Mother Nature looks like she's gonna burn the grass off in the next few days, so hopefully that will end our mowing concerns.
Yeah, 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 Jackfish Lake normally isn't that busy, so yeah, that one is, uh, just curious about it, because it's, it's, it's receiving a lot of abuse. But thank you very much.
Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you, uh, one last question for the Director. Do we have a current road maintenance policy that is in place for grader operators for frequency maintenance of road? Uh, condition of roads to be done, you know, after graded, to make sure they're in proper condition? Is that handbook that I know you were working on at some point, done and in their hands yet?
Through the chair, there is a procedure that graders are uh, grader operators receive or are explained, uh, on how to grade, we are working currently to build a service level program for council on the type of road and then the frequency. Of course, that is not interrupted by Mother Nature, but we are still building that portion of the program as it's been eyes on the ground up until now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the Director? Reeve Hall?
On page thirty-seven, you mentioned that you're working with the province on a solution for road access to a couple of properties that would require dispositions, can you give us some details on that and whether there's a financial impact on the county? Are we building roads into properties then?
Uh, through the chair to Reeve Hall, uh, there is no financial impact other than the application time staff have for the disposition, working with the rate pairs. Uh, they would be at their cost and through development agreements.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Gerlach?
Yeah, um. My first question is, uh, brushing on the north and south side of the Poplin, is that individual one? Or there's several Poplin, which is a?
That's through the chair to Counselor Gerlach, no, it is, uh, close to Richmond Park.
Okay, good, that's not my population. Okay, uh. Secondly, uh, in regards to approach construction, it says five, six, and nine, there was, there was one in Vision one last year, it was baked and whatever, but it didn't get put in, I hope it doesn't fall enough on the list.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Gerlach, you'll have to give me specifics after the meeting, and I can check on that for you.
There was that, and and then there was the causeway that was done, um, what is, where is the causeway, what is the causeway?
I would, I would ask for, directionally, I'm still learning the county, if Counselor Minz could explain specifically, it would be helpful.
Counselor Minz?
Thank you, that's the, uh, gravel hall section, uh, remember that, that road that we built across by Mystic Meadows? Oh, yeah, we've renamed that the causeway just due to the fact that it's a causeway, it's built across just is the muskeg in between two lakes, you know exactly where, yeah. Yeah, that's a tough one to actually keep maintained, the beavers in that area are eager. Are, are very, very active. That's why when when them screens are removed off of those pipes, it's a nightmare. I remember when we put them steel pipes in, that, that, uh, we thought, we thought we had the world world beat, but if you remove the screens, you're you're sowed.
Okay, and my last question is on the gravel hall road, like the Prairieville West Hill is need, need some attention, that is the the contractor's responsibility to repair those from the spring hall?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Gerlach, yes, we are working with the contractor on that.
They're they're not gonna peel themselves, something needs to be done. Good, that's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Chamsik?
Wow, lots of great questions, I was just curious, on page thirty-seven, the new, uh, imagery expected in July, um, where they re-flued, I was wondering if there was a comment if that was Jackfish and, um, um, if you can comment on that. New imagery expected mid-July, initial flight had some smokes, that they re-flued the areas.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Chamsik, that's the new ortho photos to update our, uh, G I S.
Okay, and also I'd just like to make a comment, I would, I also very much appreciate all the help with administration for our library board.
Any further comments or questions for the Director, Counselor Minz?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, say thank you to the, to the bridge crew, they, they did an amazing job, there's one I was walking the other day, there's one bridge out there on Baptiste Lake that they did a really nice job, and, and thank you very much for that, they've been doing a, doing a great job.
See, no further questions? Let's move on to the update from the Department of Community and Protective Services. Are there any questions for the Director? It's on page forty-one of your agenda package. Counselor Holland?
Thanks very much. Um, I just noticed on page forty-one, uh, testing has commenced on the new body cameras, um, which is great, just curious if that information is going to be advertised, so the community knows that, uh, body cameras are going to be utilized. Page forty-one.
Director?
Something that we can, um, consider putting in a newsletter, for sure.
Oh, that'd be great, thank you. Um, I noticed, if I may continue, um, page forty-two, um, under Athabasca or A red, um, there's the discussion on the tourism website redevelopment, and, um, just a uh, comment, um, with regards to another item we had learned at F C M, um, and it was in our report here, that there is an awesome, uh, tourism website that has been created through Destination Canada and Athabasca County. Um, all the stats are there, so just wondering if that's something that A red is aware of and may be able to utilize.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the Director? Seeing none?
If I may, Madam Chair? So on July twenty-fifth is council and, uh, M P C was moved
So on July twenty fifth is council and uh MPC was moved before council at. Nine thirty? Nine twenty-five, sorry. Uh, we do have a number of subdivision files coming to MPC on that date. I think seven or eight for sure. So uh, we would like to request that we start that MPC meeting at probably nine o'clock as opposed to nine twenty-five. Because there are a number of subdivision files and um. I think a couple of development files as well. So it's not going to be a five-minute meeting.
Okay.
I wouldn't think so. Just a, a request of uh of council.
Chair of MPC? Um, well, we can't make that motion at committee at the hall, but you as the chair can. I believe, make that. Riffle?
We've often talked about not starting super early because it doesn't work for a lot of people. And the idea of doing it at nine twenty-five is simply so that council can start late. Without having to sit and twiddle our thumbs. So we, we timed them to be nine twenty-five and nine thirty so that we don't end up with, you know, ten o'clock start on council, finish the meeting at nine thirty-five and have to sit for twenty-five minutes.
Right.
Is. I have no objection to starting council. We're late if we have.
Except for we have two public hearings that day that are planned for nine thirty and nine forty.
Okay. This is the problem with moving meetings, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for the director? To you? There's no further questions. Can we get a motion to accept the department updates for information? Councillor Minz? Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried eight, no. Administration, is our delegation here early? Would there be any appetite to move forward with our delegation so we don't hold him up? Right, let's take a five-minute recess. And then we will come back for our delegation. Our delegation? Sorry. Call the meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is the delegation from MCS Net. Um, we'll start with introductions.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Bernhardt. I am the Business Development Manager with MCS Net. Thank you very much for inviting me today.
Welcome, Kevin. I'll start by introducing the others around the table. To your right would be CAO Bob Beck. Our recording secretary, Ms. Blair. Communications today is Ms. Plurid. And councillor Minz.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, Rob Minz, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island, Lake Erie.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for coming today. I'm Tracy Holland, Division Five, which is east of Athabasca.
Kelly Chamsak, Division Seven, grasp on that more crusty data areas.
I'm Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three.
Bright Hall, uh, reside in Division Four.
Good morning, Joe Gerlick, Division One, the Rochester area.
Hey, good morning. Welcome, Gary Cromwell, far north up to and including Wandering River. Thank you for being here today. Thank you.
And.
Hi, I'm Natasha Kaptenik, Division Two, Collington, Manuka, New Pine Creek.
There we go.
Hello there.
Thank you. All right. Councillor Kaptenik's joining us via Zoom today.
So for the person that's attending uh virtually, are you hearing my mic all right?
Uh, yep, I can hear you fine. Thank you.
So thank you very much for giving me some time this morning. I appreciate the invitation. Your CAO extended uh an email our way and I was happy to oblige and make the trip up. It's always nice to see your area of the country. Uh, one of the most beautiful views from the waiting room that I I've ever seen. Um, I do have a fairly lengthy presentation here, but I want to encourage you, it will be fairly quick. I don't read slides. You have them in your presentation. I'll make some comments on them. Uh, my goal is to try to get through the information as quickly as possible while also answering your questions. It is presented in a presentation format, but please, uh, I'd like it to be more of a discussion. So. Please interject at any time whatsoever. Uh, oh, excuse the vast thing. Where do I? Yeah, can you just maybe? I don't know where to point for your clicker. There we go. Did you do that or did I do that? I did that. So as the slide points out, I'm gonna, I, I was here last year. Uh, for those of you recognize me, I will go over um a little bit of history on who we are as a company for those who may not know. I have changed the slide somewhat from the last time those to make it a little bit fresh. Uh, we are a family-owned company. Uh, one hundred percent family-owned. And. That uh is something that I find really encouraging uh as an employee. Uh, all of our upper senior management are rural Albertans. All of the family members live in St. Paul. Uh, all our middle managers, myself included, are Albertans, uh, really living. So. What I like to say for this slide is that I know that everybody in this council chamber. Is here because you believe in a certain something about rural Alberta. You have a certain feeling for where you live. And we have the same feeling. We have the same passion for rural Alberta because that's who we are. Um, and it's so nice to work in a company that feels the same at work as it does out when I'm out on the road. There we go. So something that a lot of people don't know, but we started out MCS. Net stands for Micro Computer Store. And then they started the net as a subsidiary of the Micro Computer Store. And one of the things that they were doing at the time is providing dial-up. And our innovation officer, Mark, uh, and one of the, the family members decided, you know, we need to try this thing, this wireless idea. And they actually used the Pringles can because that was the size of a container that they needed for the radio equipment. And they took a Pringles can with this special equipment out to our airport and they actually got a signal. It wasn't anything compared to what we have today, of course, but it actually beat dial-up. And they figured, wow, we have something, we're on to something here. And twenty-eight something years later, we're at almost twenty-six thousand customers and offering gig speeds. So. From the humble beginnings of a Pringles can, I think is quite a, an interesting beginning. Today, it's just sort of a summary of who we are. We have. At the time of the slide, twenty-five, five. Twenty-five thousand, five hundred customers. We're just creeped over the six hundred now. Um, seventy gigair communities, four thousand gigair customers, and we are the largest commercial deployment of the sixty gigahertz. Which is the gig, what we've branded gig air, which is the uh fiber speed wireless service in the world. Um, we're not the only provider of it. We just have the largest network of it. Uh, we are a member of a organization called CanWisp. Which wireless internet service provider is a WISP. And we attended the conference in Ottawa this last year and we did discover that we have by far the largest deployment of this technology. Uh, anywhere. So we're very proud of it. We've had to innovate quite a little, quite a bit. Um, to make it happen, but it's something that has changed the game for us. Absolutely. So we're very focused on our, our gig air deployment. Um, at the end, we do have three fiber-to-the-premise communities. And we are working on Thorhilt and coming up next year, um, let me just be a. Bonneville will have a community. Uh, what causes us to go from delivering internet wirelessly? To doing fiber to the home is very simple, a government grant. Uh, so if, if uh it is so deemed that a community is going to get fiber, then we. Bid on it and, and approach that project. Uh, we have one hundred and seventy-three towers which are connected to fiber. I mention that now because what we. Do most of our fiber builds is what we call transit fiber. Is to connect our towers to fiber, which does a couple of things. It allows us to deliver the gig air to a community, but it also speeds up our rural customers. By taking the load off of it, uh, allows it to focus a little bit more for the customers that, that are out of town. Uh, we are, I, I said very proudly, Alberdin, and we are a local Alberta employer. We have. Seventy-three employees, eight contracted installers, and all of them are, are, uh, well, ninety-eight percent of them are Alberta residents. We don't contract out our work. So everybody on our customer service department, everybody in our tech support department. Is MCS Net employee. We do have a few that um. Live in BC. I think there's three, but they work remotely. Everybody else either works in our Edmonton office or our St. Paul office. And I will also stress that our St. Paul office is that office and Edmonton is our satellite. Here's a quick uh look at our service area. And all of our towers are, are um indicated on this as well. The, the circles in the cities, that's just to indicate, there's nothing special about those locations per se. It's more just the landmark, uh, the map. And you can see that we've expanded, I'm gonna say about a good two hours in every direction from St. Paul. Approximately. It's getting uh, part of my job is reaching out and expanding our territory and it's getting fairly strong, good drive. To get to the edges of it. So um. During COVID, we focused quite a bit on shoring up our current infrastructure within this area. By building transit fiber, by upgrading our towers, because we saw in COVID, of course, so there was a lot of at-home. Entertaining, educating, working, happening. So the demand for internet went up greatly. So I like to say this map went from light blue to dark blue during COVID. Now, since that has passed and we've got our infrastructure short up, we're now looking at expanding. Gig air, which is our millimeter wave technology, uses a sixty gigahertz wave. Just to summarize it very quickly is it's a very short wave. That travels at the speed of light. Which allows it to o- to offer the fiber speeds. It works a little bit differently from, from a lot of different services and the fact that we have a radio on a tower. We'll go to a first location which is called a POP, Point of Presence. Uh, we have about a two-kilometer range from a tower to this POP. And then from there, we go about two hundred, two hundred and fifty meters. And we actually mesh through a community, uh, the neighborhood here. Um, and in town, its houses are actually connecting to other houses. So it forms a network. And that allows the network to be a little bit more robust. Because if one house goes down, it can grab a neighbor's signal. Uh, nearby. So it's not necessarily tied directly to the tower. You'd be tied directly to. Um, your neighbor's house. My home in St. Paul actually isn't even pointed at the tower. It's pointed to my neighbor who's pointed to another neighbor who's pointed to the tower. Uh, one of the innovations we've come up with just this last year. Um, our rural radios, which we call OFDM, and I don't know what the acronym stands for, but um. They've actually found a way to make that old-style radio talk with the new gig air radios, which is something that even our manufacturer of the, the gig air radio set couldn't be done. So they managed to work out a way for this to happen and we call that our OFDM failover. This is our redundancy. So when we go into a community now and we're upgrading people to gig air, we will leave a few of these. Old radios in place because they are way more robust than a gig air radio. And should something happen with the network, these older radios can still pick up a signal. And instead of going to zero, you might just drop to fifty over. Ten or a hundred or so. So you don't really even notice it. Especially this is uh especially handy when we have corporate clients that can't have their point of sales go down. One of the things we also do in all of our uh gig air communities and fixed wireless communities is we form community partnerships. So we will uh make an arrangement with a not-for-profit, be it, it can be a municipal building like an arena, or it can be a not-for-profit like Alliance Club or an egg society. And we'll put a free Wi-Fi hotspot in there. Uh, in exchange, they just put up a poster saying provided by MCS Net. Uh, we have. Just under a hundred of these hotspots right now throughout our service area. It's something that uh is part of my. Responsibility and I have about eight or nine of them on the go right now. So we're constantly adding. To our um. Offering. Of this community. Engagement and it's something that I'm very proud of. It allows a not-for-profit to take that off their budget line, put the money somewhere else. Um, oh, I think I've missed a few slides. There we go. So now, well, enough about me. Now let's talk about you. Uh, this is. As rough as I could get the county, uh, using my square. Uh, screen capture. This highlights the fiber and the towers within Athabasca County. You can see that we essentially run around highways. And it heads out to the west and then up north and south of town. And all of our towers there are located as well. The towers that aren't near a community would be offering what we call our fixed wireless service to the rural customers. And then uh the towers that are within a community that are close to fiber would have to get here. Last year. We did. This built. You may have remembered us coming through town. This is what we happened last year. And as a matter of fact, you may have heard that we received some grant money. From the U. UBU, your Universal Broadband Fund, UBF. Um. This happened. Because of that. Um, they were very slow in their announcing. We knew that this was happening years before we were ever able to. Make a public announcement. So this happened. Knowing that announcement would be coming in the near future. So this is what happened in Athabasca County because of our UBF grant application. We went. Uh, west of town and then up to. Um. Island Lake. We. Oh, I'm Whispering Hills as well. I have to look down here. I didn't bring my glasses today. Um, South Baptiste did not get a fiber build. You have a tower there. I do have good news for you. Uh, we are gonna do what we call a licensed link to that. Uh, community and we'll, we'll be able to offer gig air. In that area. We don't necessarily have to have fiber to a tower, as long as that tower can communicate to one with fiber. Then we can offer the gig air service and we're something that we're starting to use more and more, actually are these license links. It allows us to expand our service. Uh, much quicker than building fiber everywhere. Yes, absolutely.
Can you please use your microphone?
So on that note, um, is it? Just as quick?
Just as quick.
It's high-speed?
Yes.
Go from tower to tower.
Yes, just as quick. And one of the things that I do quite often have to encourage people on because they will ask, because your network, why are you? Why are you saying you're so fast? When you have to go from house to house? And the answer to that is simply, we're talking about the speed of light. So. It's really irrelevant how many radios it hits. Um, you click your mouse to search information on kangaroos. It's to Australia and back before you take a sip of your coffee. So. Um, it's actually faster. Our gig air service is actually faster through the air than when it hits the fiber. Um, the signal slows down about thirty percent in fiber as it does over the air. So actually our, the, the wireless offering is. Practically speaking, just as fast. As fiber. There's, there's just no way to comprehend the speeds that we're talking about here. So I will just do a folk, are there more questions? Yes.
Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you. When you were talking about, you said your home is not pointed to a tower, it's pointed at a home, pointed to a home, pointed at a home, pointed to a tower.
Yes.
What happens if that home that you're pointing to and the home that that home is pointed to are no longer with gig air or they move or the new owners are. Forbid a fire? And now you're, do you have to come and realign where you're pointed at? Does that, will that give you an interruption as you're?
If you, if you're saying, as MCS Net, yes, we would realign the radio. There's a couple of things that happen. And one of the reasons why we were, we were so eager to get this failover that I mentioned. Uh, established is because. Mister Jones would go to Mexico for two weeks and unplug his radio. And take down his neighbors. And we would hell constantly be rewiring. So with this failover, it allows us to put in strategic places where that's not gonna happen. We do have a, it is an issue. But we do have a department whose sole responsibility is realigning radios. And we haven't lost anybody because of a, of a radio going down. They might experience a disruption. But it's one of our priorities and we would attend to it immediately. So quite often they can actually just reroute it in the office. Virtually. Uh, if it requires a physical reorientation, then somebody's on the road right away.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, so, and I, I pronounced this community wrong last time. It's Collington? Is that, yes, okay. So it's Collington, as you can see, when I was here in twenty twenty-three, we had ten subscribers there. Uh, this year we have thirty-four subscribers. Um, oil. We went from sixty-seven to a hundred and fifty-five this year.
Madam Chair. Uh, through the chair to our delegate, what are the uh? The red exclamation points or, or shoe prints you have?
When I took this screenshot. Those Rex, red exclamations had to take it in. Um, to the office. It couldn't, it doesn't necessarily mean there was a service disruption, but that particular location. Had contacted us for some. To the office. It couldn't, it doesn't necessarily mean there was a service disruption, but that particular location had contacted us for some. Reason and there was a ticket in the system for it.
Councilor Holland. Thank you. So when you mentioned the subscribers, is this Gig Air, is this fiber?
This is Gig Air.
This is Gig Air.
Yeah, this is Gig Air. You can see in Collington, for example, in the far right side of the picture, that's the tower.
Okay.
Coming into town.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So that tower would have fiber. The homes in the, in the community would not.
Councilor Mintz.
So then trees in, in, let's say Collington, let's say Whispering Hills. Trees in that area, is there?
Massive problem.
That is a problem.
A flag is a massive problem. But it's something that we've, as you know, with. The size of our network, it's something we've become adept at overcoming. Sometimes, however, it does take us a while to get to somebody who's asked for Gig Air. Because we have to establish good connection with a neighbor. Monday, for example, when we launched there, it took us a few months to get everybody. Because we had to bring some houses online and then, then we can reach you. You may have your house here and your neighbor, and your neighbor here who has Gig Air and you want it. You might have to wait until the neighbor across the road gets it, because we go across like this. So there are ways around. Of course, elevation is one way to do it. TV towers are still gold. If you have a TV tower on your house, which a lot of these older communities still have them, that's fabulous once again. But yes, obstructions, contour, trees. Anything like that is definitely an issue. The more beautiful your home, the harder it is to supply you with internet.
Thank you.
And grassland, you can see we went from eighteen to thirty. Island Lake, that was part of our grant. So that just came online this year and we've added sixty-two. Very interesting situation there and we ended up kind of revising where we were going to put. Our tower and we're at the Bald Diamond there. I think you're all aware of that, but that was a bit of a topic of discussion for many people. South Baptiste to come, Gig Air coming via licensed link at sometime this year. We're just working on the permitting at this time. I have no firm date for that. So I did say I try to move through it fairly quickly. That is the bulk of my presentation. However, I am open for questions and conversation at this time.
Councilor Mintz.
Just wondering, okay, you were talking about going from tower to tower. Is there a distance for that then too, or?
We are doing. I'm just trying to get. The names are gone. Redwater, no. Gibbons to Morneville. We can do that shot. So it's quite a long distance. Contour is more important than distance for this. The reason that we're, we have to license it is because of the speed that we're providing. After a certain speed, you require a license to do it. So the range isn't really a factor. We're going to go to Gibbons, Bon Accord and Morneville without, with, with no issue and. I am not as savvy on the technical aspect of it. We do have a gentleman named Miles who, who is in charge of our network. If he says it's good, then I, then I go and I get a tower. So, so far, we haven't been limited and it's, the licensed linking is something this last. I'm going to say even just six months has really become something we're looking at because it's allowing us to expand fairly quickly.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Councilor Holland?
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's really good information that you've brought forward to us and amazing how far you've gotten in the community and expanded and that's awesome. The fiber you mentioned, I think it was, if the community is so deemed to get fiber, you bid on it. Can you expand on that a little bit more as to who determines if a community is aimed to receive fiber and what the bidding is it an auction? Is it, what, what, how does that work?
It's the federal government's responsibility in a way. They're the ones who decide. They have a fifty-ten standard. And so they will hire, and I'm not sure the name of the companies that they use, but they will hire a third party to do speed tests in communities. To determine where they think internet could be improved. And then once they have determined a community, they, they determine how they want it delivered. We could do it cheaper with Gig Air. But sometimes they just determine in their wisdom that this community will get fiber and it gets fiber.
So thank you very much. And I understand grants are huge and what MCS Net has put out for their own pocket as well to, you know, make this all happen. Though, so there was a recent announcement as well that ExploreNet is, is, or Explorer, I guess it is, is also putting in fiber. Some in the same locations that are already existing. Now, does that tie into your fiber, existing fiber? Is that another fiber line? For Explore or how does the competition work?
Well, I can only comment really on how we approach it and this fact is we're always looking to have our own. I will say it is a fairly inefficient system. However. When we go to put fiber in, we do like to have our own because it shores up our network. We do have quite a bit, as a matter of fact, along Highway Two A, south of Laduke, we are working with Acacia. To partner with them and, and get a few tie-ins, we call it, to use their fiber to expand on that way. So there is a provision whenever you build fiber that it is available to a competitor. There's no, you can't close it off. And we have purchased dark fiber, which is unlit fiber in a, in a conduit. From another provider as well. So we, we have that fiber. It's along their line, but we happen to have a few strands in it. So as much as everybody wants to have their own fiber, we do at times work together as well.
So in same line of that, using other infrastructure, other people's competitions, infrastructure, et cetera. Are your towers that are existing, can they accept? And I mean, you don't know what you don't know. So I'm going to ask, it might sound really silly. But can those towers also be utilized for cell phone?
No, ours can't. And. There's a reason for interference from wavelength, but there's also another reason in the fact that our towers aren't high enough. Okay. They wouldn't really be of any use to a cell cellular company because we're only about a hundred, hundred and fifty feet up. Which. Wouldn't really cut it very far down the highway. So that's the main reason why we don't see telecommunicators using our towers.
Okay.
But we do co-locate.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, the one here is co-located. We're co-locating on that one. So we have several towers that we co-locate on. So we don't own the tower, but we're on it.
Yes.
We're doing the same thing in Morneville. We're, we're working on a co-locate agreement with the tower that's there. And should someone approach us, we would also look at doing the same for them.
Right. And is it just last question? So when you mentioned co-locate, I was wondering what that, the term was for that particular sharing of towers.
Yeah.
So basically, if someone comes to you and says, hey, we would like to also use your tower, you can't really refuse them. Is that accurate?
I don't think we can refuse them. I think that there's assessment on the tower that has to be done. It's more an engineer's assessment. And what they want to put on because there's certain wind loads that towers can handle.
Okay.
And we have been prevented from going to some towers. Because our equipment would take it past its wind load. So that's the main thing that we're looking at.
Okay.
There are a lot of providers, however, that would prefer to have their own tower. We're one of them for the simple fact of control. But if someone were to approach us and say, oh, for example, we have partnered with Dewberry. We put our tower at their fire hall and all of their communication equipment went on it. So we're very willing to work with. With other organizations, municipalities for our towers.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reeve Hall.
You talked a little bit earlier about the point of presence receiver and the, the two kilometer line from the tower. So in some of the rural areas, there's obviously less density and, and establishing a network of multiple buildings within two hundred meters may not be possible. Is there, are there limits in the rural areas to how many of those point of presence receivers you could set up? Attached to each tower? So if there's one or two houses somewhere that are within range of that tower, can they get that style of service to increase their speeds? Even though there's not forty houses around?
They can't. And it's one of the things that we're looking at quite seriously now because we've. Really taken a hard look at our Gig Air deployment. And one of the things we are looking at are, actually a project I did is all the customers within two kilometers of a tower. So we are able to reach a rural customer if they're within two kilometers of a tower. But we wouldn't be able to go another two from there. So it's very limited rural. However, I will, there is a ray of sunshine on the future as far as our fixed wireless goes. There's some new technology coming out. Which will significantly increase the speeds of our rural customers. So we're very excited when this new radio comes out. Within the next year or so, and we're hoping to begin increasing the speeds to rural customers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. I know a few different locations in our community where the free Wi-Fi is available in community buildings and I think it's been very well received. It's, I'm very thankful for it. Some nights when my child can watch her Disney Plus or whatever it is. Trying to do different things. I'd like to thank you for employing rural, building rural and. Being in our community and helping us expand and thrive. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We will take a five minute recess and then come back. Thank you.
Feel free to reach out.
We're good. Wonderful. Next item on our agenda is item five point four, which is the counselor updates. Today, we will start with Reeve Hall.
Rob will still likely have the longer one. It feels like it's only been a few days since our last committee, the whole meeting, but in the time other than the regular scheduled meetings that we're all aware of. I spoke, welcomed greetings at Canada Day in Athabasca. Attended a number of water commission meetings in both Thorhild and Colin Lake to discuss potential to provide service. Which I think, as we all know, has impacts on our. Residents and users because the, the greater the volume of water that the commission can move, the lower the price per unit. And so those were, they're very different in style and certainly at the calling like and within the opportunity, that's just the very beginning of relationship building and, and exploring whether there's. A need and a desire to work together. And Thorhild has a water for life grant. It's just a bit short of what would be required to do the project. And so there's. Some decisions that need to get made by them, but principally it was about having that conversation to make sure. the new the commission was open. Uh, there was also a steering committee meeting last Friday to discuss the waterline extension to the west in the county. And this will uh require some additional discussion and decisions by our council, which I I expect to see on the next council agenda for our consideration and additional conversation. I also attended the Boyle Hospital at the end of June and can confirm that I spent a whopping fifty two dollars on coffee and donuts to take over there, which were delivered by Deputy Reeve that morning. And that's kind of been it.
Thank you, Councilor Gerlick.
Not a whole lot to report other than what's been reported before, uh other than to make a request that uh when if they get on a gravel haul here in the next little while, we head himself, that they make sure and do some water, uh road watering or something. Because we had it there a couple of days where there was a, there was a truck every three minutes going one way or the other, and the dust hardly settled before the next one was going the other way. And if we're gonna get ten days of this hot weather and you do decide to haul anything, I hope they start first thing in the morning with with some dust mitigation. Um, other than that, there's not too much.
Thank you, Councilor Cromer.
Thank you. Well, we're going to start off with attended the fly in barbecue with a number of my peers and it was a very well done event. Kudos to our active and our infrastructure department for for rocking the world on that. Being minorly petty, I will say the only thing I wish I would have seen fly in barbecue was our logo on the sponsor list. But uh we did host it, so I I think it's implied, but it would be nice to have seen our logo on there. Uh, but it was a great event. So very happy that myself and Councilor Kapitani attended the healthier communities golf tournament held in Lacklavish in uh support of the uh Lacklavish community for uh rural healthcare and Portage College. Being that a large number of our residents also use that healthcare facility was a great event to attend. Uh, we have some good networking. Uh, we're able to have two members of staff attend with us. It was a even split between admit their council and staff, which was grand, very nice to get out with with the people that are actually boots on the ground for the county, working hard. And I think they enjoyed that day. What Council Kapitani and I both got were many comments of surprise and happiness to see Athabasca County actually attend. Those were the words used on more than one occasion. Oh, it is great to see you guys actually attend and come out again. And you know, it made us both the, we spoke about and we realized that we do need to do more events where we're out in the public. We're here for a reason and and going out to those type of events are very, very important to ensure that we keep up on that. Uh, dealing with same road complaints that everyone else is dealing with about roads and frost boils and maintenance. Uh, as always, I'm getting many complaints about the cut across uh to Plamondon, which is on our agenda here later on today. And I will take the opportunity uh later to read a email received from one of the repairs in that area. Also, just putting a plug in for the wandering rivers farmer market coming up this weekend, July twentieth and twenty first at the wandering river senior center from ten AM to four PM vendors from everywhere between Edmonton and Fort McMurray will be down. So it should be a great event. And there will be a bit of a hot dog barbecue and that going on as well. So if you're bored on the weekend, come on down to wandering river. Joe, that would be the far north end of the county opposite of you, but it is a beautiful, beautiful area up there and hope to see you. That is all I have for today.
Thank you, Councilor Mintz.
Uh, okay, I'm pretty well the same thing as uh uh as Reeve Hall um attended the a few meetings regarding the the water line to the MD of Opportunity uh regarding the water line to Thorhill County. And that piggybacked with the Thorhill County one piggybacked with the uh uh Aspen Regional Water Services uh commission meeting in Boyle. We actually met at Thorhill in Thorhill at at the ski hill, a very nice place. If no one's been there, it's kind of cool to see. And uh, yeah, had a good conversations with them trying to hopefully, hopefully uh see if we can get them to to advance in their water line would be great. And uh the commission meeting uh uh went very well, a lot of just verbal discussion on 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 different topics, government and asset management, verbal update on that and you know, uh that's moving forward and uh a little bit of a few close session items that we'll probably be talking about here later on. And uh, yeah, that uh that was on uh July second. Uh, July twelfth, we had a very great meeting here in county office with all the summer villages, uh six of them from from out west. And it was great to see, see us all sitting around here and with associated engineering and that discussing the new uh water line going west of Athabasca um. It is a, it is a uh advisory committee and and started off with there, there's going to be oh, uh a charter made up of of contacts and phone numbers and signing authorities and stuff like that. And then from there um, the, the first design. And from there it'll go to a more detailed design and then and then uh construction. So and as Reeve Hall was saying that there's information that's went back to to the summer villages and they will come back to Athabasca County with, and then Athabasca County will probably request funding and stuff like that on the ten percent. So everybody was very upbeat on it. A couple of summer villages had had to still meet with their councils a bit just to, just to dot the i's and cross the t's on their end and and uh I can't see anything but it moving forward. So it's a another great news story to can't wait to see maybe a pipe going to ground. So and then the uh, the big thing is uh coming up this weekend to see it's the uh U thirteen provincial tournament that uh Athabasca will be hosting. And it's uh hoping that everybody will come out to it as a great, big, huge undertaking by the, by the parents of the baseball team. They, there wasn't a lot of advanced notice, like they actually got this awarded on on uh Friday evening. And asked, they were asked to actually uh host it. So it's uh U thirteen, uh it's great ball. They went through the whole provincial two round robins undefeated. And and that and and uh so it starts Friday on uh July nineteenth at, I just got the schedule here at nine AM uh will be the first game. Goes Saturday and then into the, to the finals on Sunday and it's up at the multiplex. There's uh teams coming in from Edmonton, Actville, Le Duke, Knee Hill, um Edson, Beaumont, Thorsby. Uh, so there's going to be a, a lot of, a lot of, well, seven teams coming in from, from Alberta. So so it's going to be hopefully everybody, you know, if you're, if you're interested in uh watching some great baseball. It's uh, it's, it's going to be lots of fun. So if you have time, come on out and cheer Athabasca on the uh they did very well through their, through their uh round robins. So so sure, if you can make it, have a hamburger. There'll be food trucks up there concession is going to be open. It's, it's uh it's uh, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun. So and it's going to be hot. So, okay, so that's, that's about it.
Thank you, Councilor Holland.
Thank you. Um, since we last chatted, uh let's see, we, I attended the National Indigenous Peoples' Day at the riverfront. Um, and that was excellent. Love seeing the dancers and hearing the drumming. It's amazing. Um, went to the Boyle Healthcare Center appreciation. So thank you very much for delivering those donuts and coffee. I don't know if they were really thrilled to celebrate that type of an anniversary, but uh we went out to show our support. Uh, we completed the uh spring care cleanup event in Perryville, Rochester on June twenty ninth. Uh, so thank you very much for the wonderful ice cream and the the hosting of us, Mr. Gerlick. That was awesome. Uh, we went to the magnificent rivers uh rat festival. It was well, well attended. They, it looked like it was an excellent, great uh weekend. We only were there for the June thirtieth as we had other Canada Day plans on the first, but um, it was really well done and and well organized and and uh great music, great food, um and a lot of happy people. Uh, also attended the fly in barbecue, which again was, I think it was eleven hundred plus people um that was put through there. So that was a great success. So thank everybody for uh administration for putting all that together. And there was a lot of happy faces there as well. We finished up uh in Collington on the South Bridge with the last fill that needed to go in. Um, volunteering for the last bit of the cleanup. So that was, that was completed. And other than that, it's a lot of meetings with residents, call phone calls with residents, uh having conversations about their concerns um and hopefully finding some solutions for them that uh brought some more smiles to faces. So I think that's about all for now.
Thank you, Councilor Chamsa.
Um, well, county libraries moving right along. I met with the, the friends of the library group in Rochester. Um, I was absolutely amazed over thirteen attendees in the big city of Rochester. Also later on in that week, I met with Councilor Gerlock for the monthly fundraiser in Rochester. And I have to say, I was amazed. It was a packed house with people attending from in and out of the county. Uh, great event to go to, and I think it's wonderful way to support the nonprofits in that community. Um, I attended the uh River Rats Festival and of course the fly in barbecue, which was a great time. Um, also volunteered in Collington for maintenance for the Athabasca Landing Trail. Uh, the healthcare event in Boyle. And this weekend I had the joy of what going to the Plamondon Mud Boggs to watch some of our local racers there. And it was a great event and happy that I came out. Besides meetings and other committee meetings, I met with various residents and that is all.
Thank you. Councilor Holland.
So sorry, I forgot to mention, um, you might have not seen it, but the FCM report uh to council was also submitted yesterday. Um, for everybody to have a look out there, just let me mention that one.
Thank you. Um, it does seem like we just met that not that long ago and yet. I, after our last council meeting, I delivered donuts and coffee to the staff at the Boyle Healthcare Center. Not really a celebration per se, but recognizing that the ongoing closure of the Boyle Hospital at night has been going on for two years now. And the staff there have just been phenomenal at trying to provide the best care to the community that they can, given the restraints that have been put on them. Also attended the uh an event at AU House as part of convocation. Um, convocation was incredible to see that many people come to our community and the way that the multiplex managed to pull, pull that off. And um so kudos to the multiplex and their staff as well as to Athabasca University. I found the entire event was really focused on celebrating their students and their students' accomplishments and how incredible that was. And I think it was a great opportunity to showcase our community and um everybody seemed to really enjoy themselves there. We then uh committee of the whole agenda review, check signing and arms agenda reviews, prepping for the next Pembina Zone meeting, which is July twenty second for anybody joining us in Edmonton. Uh, we had a multiplex meeting yesterday. There'll be a uh written report in the next council agenda, but some exciting things happening at the multiplex and um from the board level, really trying to respect that governance structure. Uh, we decided on a strategic planning consultant finally. We are hiring an expert to review the aquatic center boiler system. Move that along. And we also directed administration to issue an RFP for a consultant to assist in updating and rewriting the bylaws. I don't know if anybody's read the bylaws for arms, but um that's long overdue. So some great progress and also a lot of discussion around how best to work with uh Edwin Par to better things for the student experience while also dealing with patron misconduct things and different things that come along with that. So um making sure that all people feel welcome in the building, but that all patrons are safe. So a lot of great stuff happening there. Um, I also had the opportunity to meet with some representatives from Pembina Pipelines. They have their uh company culture is just incredible when it comes to supporting the community and wanting to be part of different things. And they are looking for opportunities to share the link to help our com- our community groups connect with their company when they're looking for um either help with funding different projects or get different ways that Pembina can get involved in the community. Maybe it's volunteering at an event or something. So I will share the link to that with members of council and I've already shared it with some members of the community. So um, just, it was a really great discussion about how they want to help us enhance our community and help in different ways. So that was wonderful. And other than that, I've been working hard on assisting with some upcoming community events that we have so many incredible, incredible community groups and incredible events that happen here in the summer. And so great to see that people not only from our community, but from outside of our community come to share and celebrate and we, we have, we live in like an amazing place. So Reeve Hall.
Can I add a follow up? I guess um some of the comments I neglected to mention flying barbecue and convocation, but I think one of the things that will interest council is the reports from convocation are that they receive the highest satisfaction ratings from users and staff that they've ever received after this year. And that's, I think, reflects the work that they've done and the community's done and all the volunteers to put that together. I also uh spoke there briefly to bring some greetings, but there was um sometimes I think we have a moment where we'll wonder about the decisions we make, what kind of impact do they have? Uh, one of those evenings I attended the Alberta Forest Products Association, they had a, a small gathering. And um I came uh into a conversation where a representative from Alberta Pacific was talking about how meaningful they felt the, the gesture that the county and our regional neighbors had done with the signs celebrating their anniversary. And they were bragging about it to somebody from Warehouse or on a Grand Prairie. And um, and so it, this uh, this individual has on more than one occasion said to me directly how they uh are touched by that. And um, in this case, he was telling how the, his colleague, how he felt that it, it had an impact on uh both himself and the other, some of the other staff that worked there. So I know we're getting close to the one year anniversary for when that came up, but those had had some impact. And I apologize for missing those in the earlier cycle.
Thank you. There's no more additions. Councilor Gerlick, you wanted to make a motion to accept the counselor updates as information? Okay, wonderful. We will call the question all in favor. Motion carried seven and O. Next item on our agenda is item six point one, which is draft bylaw O two one dash twenty twenty four, which is the schedule of fees. Councilor Cromer.
Thank you. Guess I'll take first uh first gig at it here. Um, first question I have through the chair to administration. Uh, where did the, the projected fees come from? Were they uh from other municipalities where they looked in comparison to? Or were they uh kind of our own building? And then then I'll get to a few of the other things I have in there after I get that question.
Administration, did you want to address that?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you to the whole committee. Uh, these fees are currently embedded in your own policies and bylaws. These are all of the current fees charged, but located in multiple locations. This document draft is a consolidation of that. Appendix B will then be a uh listing of where everything will need to be amended. Should you pass this by law for the January first start date of where they will be coming out to say the words as per schedule of fees by law.
Okay. Thank you. So these are all existing fees. None of them have been increased, decreased. It's just just what they currently are.
Existing fees awaiting feedback of this council for what you would like to. Existing fees awaiting feedback of this council for what you would like to see when the bylaw is read and passed.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. Um, first question, I'm just gonna go in order here. Uh, looking, I wrote this on page fifty-three, but it might not be exactly where it will fit in. Is there a fee for a stop work order?
Through the Chair to Councilor Cromwell, no, currently there is no fee for a stop work order.
Okay, I would like to see a fee for a stop work order when we.
Through the Chair to Councilor Cromwell, and my apologies for interrupting. I forgot to mention this earlier. We will be pulling the fines out of that. Is that generally not something you find in a schedule of fees by law? And I would recommend that a stop work order would be a fine because nobody is applying for it as a service.
Okay.
So would there be a secondary bylaw that's just the fines or would that be continued to be embedded in different bylaws?
Through there to, to you, Madam Chair, fines would generally be found with the policy or bylaw would be uh related to.
Related to, okay.
Okay, so I think a lot of what I'm looking at are going to be. Fines that I want to talk about, but they're currently embedded in our fees by law.
We can make note of any question or change you wish.
So my personal opinion as we proceed forward, uh, there should be a, a fine. For your stop work order for people that are non-compliant, non-conforming, uh for especially when we're looking at staff time and. Trying to get some reinforcement on how we follow the ways of the county. On page number fifty-four. Uh, community safety is paramount under emergency enforcement services. We have. Uh, starting at burning without a fire permit. All the way down to failure to comply with a fire control order. These are the things that keep our community safe, that keep our. Our wooded areas from catching fire, keep our hamlets from catching fire. And I think that personally, a five hundred dollar fine is not. Sufficient for community safety when you're looking at your neighbor's property and your property due to, let's say, burning. Uh, without a permit or failure to comply with a fire control order. I would like to see some changes made there. Uh, one that I'm also confused on on page fifty-five. What is the definition? Because of false represent, representation of a fire service member, fire rescue service member. Let's, we're, let's say we have a person who is driving down the highway and at a gas station and they're wearing a fire rescue shirt. Is that false representation of that forty-year veteran of the fire service who's wearing a. Uh, Summer Village or Baptiste Lake Fire Department jacket that he got from twenty-five years of service, but it says fire. Rescue on there and he's not a member anymore. I think that we need to have a proper definition of what we're talking about. Because having such a blanket. Statement with no backing. Can.
Well, have administration.
You understand what I'm trying to say on that. Uh, page number fifty-seven. Biting or chasing a person under our animal control bylaw, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we're talking about somebody getting bit and or chased by a dog. There are. Uh, deep fears of animals and being bit and even uh people with religious issues about certain animals. And I think two hundred and fifty dollars for a person being chased and or bitten by an animal. Uh, can definitely be a higher offense and I, I'd like to see some changes made on that line item. Uh, I did not see, and perhaps the Director of Community Protective Services can tell me, I did not see a littering. Fine when I went through here. Maybe we don't have one or maybe I missed it the, the many times I read through it. Uh, but I would.
Director, do you happen to know if that's currently included?
Madam, Madam Chair, just to, just to remind council, everything to do with fines. Should have been removed from this draft bylaw. So.
Okay.
The next version, everything to do with fines won't be there anyways. Those are good points, uh, but. These are taken from other bylaws that are adopted today. So we'd have to. Those are all great points to raise, but for example, everything to do with the fire services bylaw, we'll have to look at the fire services bylaw, which was just adopted by this. This council not that long ago um to make those changes. This will focus on fees and charges only, not fines. And so that was a bit of a uh omission that we made in the drafting of this. So your next draft will not include fines.
Okay. Councilor Cromwell. Do you have any questions that weren't related to fines?
You know, it's a. No, but it unfortunately it lapsed the draft in front of us the, the time that I'm gonna have to bring them up. And actually that fine was the end of my list that I had currently uh for discussion. But. So my question then, my, my final question, please, if I may be so bold. Nope, never mind. That'll do.
We can come back to you later if you need. Any further questions? Revol.
Um, I think this is also an opportunity to, to bring, as we talk about rates and fees, things kind of more in line with. Current practice. Uh, you know, things like an NSF check fee, there's no reason to not boost that up to fifty bucks, which is quite common around the world. That although also kind of seems like a fine, so I don't know if that's in or out of the discussion. On the campsites, I, I wonder if there's this warrant, so we're talking about that, a discussion. That uh we should be asking as council administration to bring a business plan to us to um, to have campsites. Run in a planned way on a more cost recovery basis, um, accepting perhaps, you know, a discussion on discounts for our residents. Um, I, wh- when I look at it, I, you know, I think there's a lot of things we provide to residents and being able to provide recreation. Um, where we in- invite and encourage our rate payers to. Um, and residents to, to use the beaches and the boat launches and the lakes. These things are, if the county's providing them, we should be encouraging first. Our residents and then, you know, have a, have a very distinct out-of-town charge. So maybe there's room for us to look at uh. A, a significantly reduced price on the day passes for people who live here. And, and the out-of-town uh far-off folks, well, that's a different, different story again. But I, I, I bring that to the table for discussion. I also uh before. I would be personally satisfied with this. Would be interested to see a bit more of analysis uh from administration on, because we're heading into twenty twenty-five. On uh seasonal rates that uh I think our seasonal rates are, are wildly undervalued for, for non-residents. Again, it's a, a choice for us to charge less to our existing residents, but um. And same thing with the uh, the, the un, the uh individual rental rates per night. I think we can bring those far closer to the line with the market. Is there something interesting happening outside? We should all. Those are the um. The other comment I had was the Farm Women's Conference I, I thought was probably not appropriate in the, this is an event. It should be up to the committee to set prices and make that work. I, I don't see that there's value in putting that in, in a volume like this. Um, unless we're also gonna tie it to very specific funding that makes sure the fees stay at that level.
Thank you. Any further? Let's, Councilor Holland.
Thank you. Um, one of the things that I did notice, this is a huge job and a huge undertaking to go through every single policy and bylaw and pull this out. So thank you very much. It's, it's a big job. Um, and it's very much appreciated to see this. It will be a lot easier to work through um for everybody. Um. We're talking about the different fees. We're talking about the different fines. We're talking about the different um pricing. And I'm wondering if it's worthy of doing a bit of a um. Review, I guess, on similar municipalities to see where, if we're all in the same. Realm of the fees and fines and, and where we're at with that. And was curious about the appetite of council to request that review. Um, before we go forward um with the bylaw.
Quiet bunch today, whole. Anybody else?
I guess the follow-up with it is I would hate to, for us to be the people to decide on, on all of these fees and fines and whatnot when we really don't have a comparison. Or an understanding of where everybody else is at. So uh I know I'm not comfortable going forward without having a comparison.
I had noted that. It, this copy of it didn't seem very user-friendly and I think the removal of the fines from. This draft would make that significantly easier. I think the fines just kind of. Made it so long and hard to read that. Um, I think that would be an excellent amendment to make. Look forward to seeing the next draft. And I do agree that maybe we should adjust some of our fines, but just including them all in the fees by law didn't really make sense to me. CAO, from your experience, are there comparative fees bylaws that we could? Compared to fairly easily to reference?
Yes, Madam Chair, everywhere. Um, we're just another unique Athabasca County thing. We don't have a fees and charges by law. That's the first time I've experienced it in my career, but uh, I guess there's a first time for everything. So. That's why it's kind of monumental that Director Whaley decided, you know, I'm gonna take this on, try to get a draft done. Cause we don't have one and had never have. So um, it is best practice to have a fees and charge by law. A lot of places have them. So probably shouldn't be a huge exercise to do a little comparison of where we're at. And, and I expect that that's probably been done in the past under each of those policies, but. Everyone updates their charges every year, so we might have lost ground.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Mins.
Yeah, on that note, I just wanna thank, thank uh the director for actually going through and. And, and I'm looking at the end, end product here. You'll be able to jump on. On, on the website and, and go into it, go into this bylaw and actually. It's right there. It's gonna be right there in front of you. You don't have to go through the policy or the, the, the extra bylaw or whatever it is. You'll have that information there, two hundred dollars for its removal. Two hundred dollars for dust control. It's essentially. And then you can make that decision. It's gonna be so much nicer. So thank you very much for that. I can't wait to see us compared to other people.
So the recommended motion today is that the committee review the draft schedule of fees by law. And direct administration to bring back any changes to the September Committee of the Whole. Councilor Mins is making the motion to you, direct administration, to bring back the amended bylaw. Draft bylaw to the September Committee of the Whole Meeting. For review, Councilor Holland.
Can we add a friendly amendment there uh to include a comparison to um comparable counties, say three?
We just ask admin to do that and give us their best advice. I don't feel the need to get into micromanaging that if. If they do the research and come back to us and say, these are the numbers. I, I'm, I'm concerned about all the things we keep asking admin to do and that we've just, we're just adding another large task. So. Uh, I feel like if admin will take a look and make sure that they make sense, I don't personally want to have to. Have all that raw data. It is their job to provide us their best advice and I think we should. Seek that. And I, and I'm worried again about how much time we. Are, are allocating on this.
Councilor Holland, follow up.
Thank you. Yes, um, as much as I understand, time is precious and um uh it's uh. A difficult commodity for everybody to have at this time. However, I think it is responsible. Uh, movement for our council to actually look at the data as we are a data-driven council, it seems, and that uh. The data that is out there, I think, should be compared to and looked at uh to make sure that we are where we need to be, as I mentioned before.
I know myself, I probably won't be waiting until the next meeting. I'll probably just look up a couple of those bylaws and compare to what we have today, just. To try and pick out any ones that I think are real outliers, but Councilor Mins.
Through the Chair to, to the CEO. When, when this bylaw comes back. You know, scheduled bylaws, it's probably gonna have, you, you, you people are gonna, gonna be looking at this anyway, right? You're gonna be comparing. To other. So is, is it a? So it shouldn't be a huge undertaking to actually just put that in for a little bit of reference or. How is that working?
Uh, Madam Chair, no, um, shouldn't be a huge undertaking. I gotta tell you, we absolutely hate when you specify which meeting it has to come back to because you're just changing our priorities. I'm. We're dropping what we're doing to make that date. So if you've got a waterline project you want us to work on, we ain't working on it because we're working on something new. So. Whenever you specify a date that you need it to come back to, it just plays with our priorities overnight. Um, as remember, all these charges are in place today. We hope to have it in place by January first. Uh. But these charges all exist in policies and different bylaws today. So.
So simply bringing back the amended one without the fines for the September Committee of the Whole Meeting isn't a big issue, but compiling more data.
Yeah, I would just prefer to a future committee of the whole meeting and, and we'll see how it works in with other priorities, because. They change and sexy are kind of our busiest time of the year, so.
Councilor Mins?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that and, and not because of the waterline project either, but, but it's like. Yeah, with that, with that information there saying that, that it's already in a bylaw, it's already sitting there. So. When we can bring it back and we have it brought back uh before uh January first of. Twenty twenty-five.
Recall.
This, this is one of the projects, I think, some of you will remember that we've been, uh, administration's been talking to us since the first quarter that we sat at this table. So it tells you how much time and energy goes into this. I would propose really that it's a two-step process. Let's get it done into, take what we currently have and consolidate it and then we can outline. Where the adjustments come in terms of our priorities for the future. So get, get this. Do what administration has asked us and. Consolidate into the uh, into the fees by law and then we can outline as a priority, the comparison to other sets for, for the next cycle so that the uh. For the twenty twenty-six update as uh, as a way to balance time for admin and give them time, given that it's taken two and a half years just to get us to this stage.
Councilor Mins?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if you're actually waving at me or you're waving at your computer, so.
I, I, I'm just agreeing to that because I just wanted to make sure it's, yeah, it's schedule of fees by law. It's got nothing to do with fines, absolutely nothing to do with fines. So take the, take the fines out and do the fees by law. And uh, and. We're good to go.
Well, and if there's a lot of concern about the fines that are in the fire services by law, maybe we can add that to a future committee of the whole meeting, just that we can have that discussion then, but. Since it's already in bylaw. So Councilor Mins has made a motion to direct administration to amend the draft schedule of fees by law and bring back to a future committee of the whole meeting for review. We will call the question. All in favor? Motion carried seven and O. Next item on our agenda is item six point two, Capital Projects. This begins on page seventy-one of your agenda package. Director, did you want to? Address this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, there was uh money put in the budget when you passed the final budget in April. Or May, sorry, I can't remember the date and uh. Public Works is keen to do something, so we require direction from council on what we should be doing. Um, there are four listed projects, uh, all of which have been discussed. On many occasions uh over the years. Um. Unfortunately, the two stiff applications for this year to the provincial government were declined, one for the Alpak Bridge, one for the Collington Bridge Replacement. As council had previously budgeted for its removal out of your.
One for the Alpac Bridge, one for the Collington Bridge Replacement, as council had previously budgeted for its removal out of your own reserves. Uh, which will be happening later this summer. Um, we had also proposed a hard surfacing project. And background reasoning has been provided uh as well as Cape ceiling. Council never agreed to an area that you would like to try that in. Uh, so we're here asking for direction on. If and what we can do.
Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. This is going to be a fun discussion today, I can guarantee it. Um, I'm going to start off with a multitude of questions um. Through the chair to the director of infrastructure, and when you need me to pause and get a breath or eat a donut, please tell me. Uh, starting with, let's go with point number one, the Alpac Bridge. The notes that really caught out to me. Is we are still trying to figure out ownership of that bridge to a point and. A partnership agreement with Alpac for that bridge. Do we have any? Any details, any leeway? Uh, it is definitely a vital project, and I'm not taking away from that at all. But what are we looking at for, like I said, ownership, cost sharing? Timeline that that project needs to be done or can be done? And if I am not mistaken, C E O Beck mentioned something about a community grant. That we might be able to apply for at some point if. And I could be way out in left field if STIP didn't go through, that there might be other avenues for looking at funding. For that particular structure. Does that ring a bell to you, or am I having re- really weird county dreams at night that I shouldn't be?
See you.
Madam Chair, just because I don't remember doesn't mean it didn't happen.
So to date, the ownership of the. Bridge has not been clearly identified.
To date, the county is questioning the ownership of the bridge. The province is not. Um, by applying under STIP as directed by the province, it implies that it is county infrastructure. Uh, the application was made and was rejected. Uh, the bridge reporting is done by the consultants contracted by the county. Uh, in order to present the STIP application, uh, the state of the bridge to address Counselor Cromwell. Um. Right now, it's a membrane issue, uh. But if things are left to. Disintegrate as a large portion of the bridge program has been, it's going to be. An astronomical sum of money likely, I mean, a bridge replacement of that bridge would exceed the total budget of Athabasca County for a year.
No doubt.
So. It is administration's recommendation to fix now instead of replace later, especially in a bridge that size.
No, no argument on that.
Yeah, let's stay with item number one. Were there any other comments related to item number?
That's item number one. Uh, let's, let's just bring it back into focus here of. Of what uh M D A Lester Slave River is doing right now. They have a bridge crossing the Athabasca River also on a on a. The old highway two A, call it, and virtually the. The government's uh pushing it back on them that that they own that bridge, so. And they're in in consultation with the government and and that, uh, trying, trying to get a new bridge there and stuff like that, so. Yeah, and the government's going to. Say what the government wants to say, and if they don't want to take ownership of this bridge, they're just going to push it back on us. So it is a. It is a uh. Maintenance issue that we do have on the air. If we let let it deteriorate to nothing, we don't have enough money to rebuild that bridge as we can see from eight thirteen right now. Five, six year project is like, oh, my lord, so. So uh doing, I I think we really need to look at this.
I'm quite concerned about the precedent that simply putting up the money to repair it would have. In the future, when the bridge does need to be replaced. I just. Even if we had the money sitting here right now to do it, I worry about in the future. But I also worry about the impacts to our local business and economy that not repairing it would have. So I don't think there's a. Truly easy answer either way, Counselor Holland.
Can I get a clarification, please, on what you said, Madam Chair, which is a very great point. Forgive me, Counselor Holland. Um. Deputy Reeve Chair, you you mentioned. Play by putting the repair cost in now versus a replacement later on and financial implications in a nutshell. Through the chair to the director, doing the repair now, what would be the lifespan of that bridge? Without repair or with the repair as stated right now, because I think that would be a very important question to ask.
Uh, through the chair to uh Council Cromwell. I can't give you uh off the top of my head, sorry, the full life expectancy of the uh fix. I can just tell you that. It would uh. No, I don't want to give you dates. I can't do it off the top of my head, but I, our consultants have said that this is a. This is a priority if you don't want the bridge to face failure. And sorry, to answer his earlier question, we have partnership uh. Agreements in principle with Alpac for assistance, so.
Counselor Holland, I'm sorry you were cut off earlier.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. Um, I, that's what I was going to mention was the partnership with Alpac. I guess I'm confused. We had conversations last year and it was prior to to when you were here. But I was under the impression that there was quite a few talks happening with the government to say that. We have an some sort of an agreement. Is that agreement not in existence? As was it found? Like. I guess, you know, there was quite a robust conversation with our previous C E O about it. Um. Did that fail with the regards to the where the agreement was supposed to be held?
Um, there were a lot of discussions um. From the um trail of discussion, I can see that the province believes this is our bridge. That their reading of the agreement, and it goes dates back to the construction of Alpac to begin with, um. Is that they believe that this is our bridge and encouraged us to apply under the STIP grant. And I believe that was right from the regional director and may have even reached up to the minister's office. And encouraged us to apply under the STIP grant, so they're saying that it's a local bridge, but. It's certainly something that could be covered under STIP. We just, we didn't make the final cut this year.
Okay, thank you. Um, as well, the one point nine million that was uh applied for, is that what the maintenance costs? Like the the repair for the maintenance to get it to where we need to be, is that that amount?
Through the chair to Counselor Holland, yes, that is the estimated cost, but just for the maintenance.
And and Alpac is still partnering with a little bit of financing, or is that outside of?
Uh, there is a an agreement in principle for financial assistance. Okay, thank you.
Read Hall.
I know, you know, we've um. In terms of infrastructure that we have, I. Think this one is pretty critical, um, remembering that there's no viable alternative crossing for our single biggest source of industry in the in the region. Um, we have an industry partner that's willing to work with us, and I I think. I'd still like to see us agree, sort of with the idea that we continue to try to work with the government of Alberta as a potential source of funds. And then we push at that to see if there's some funding outside of STIP, either through uh lobby efforts to the Minister of Transportation, but also forestry, Minister Lowen. And and others to see if if there is some way to assemble some. Ad hoc funding, which um I think, you know, we would need to talk to our M L A about and and look if there's a way to do it, but either way. A project like this. To me is one we can't, it would be irresponsible to 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 defer. Because of the the escalation in costs that will come, and so if ever there was a case to actually use entirely our own money, to me, this one. Fits the bill, and then by doing that, we actually take it off the list of projects we're asking for STIP funding for, which. Means we can apply for a single project or a various targeted set of projects next year and hope for a better um. Better outcome in the application process and. And as disappointing as it is to not see the STIP funding on this and the other application, I think we do have to also acknowledge. The region received, you know, around sixteen million dollars and uh. It's hard to not argue that we got our share of their, of the funding for that. So I. It would be nice to have some clarity from council that it still makes sense to try to, you know, speak to our M L A and and look for. Are there other ways to work together to find some government help with this? But if there's not, I think it's something we have to do. But again, without having that clarity. It's a little bit. When I've been in, you know, uh, the spaces where I've I've been talking to the ministry ministers, um. It's hard to, it's hard to really put that that forward without knowing that it makes sense to council.
Councilor Mins.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. Uh, right now, I know we wanted to go for STIP funding for it and all that and and uh. But in a way, if there's a partnership with. With Alpac um for now, for doing this maintenance. That's kind of been a waste of funding. Uh, we get a little bit of extra money from from Alpac to do this and and to 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 not do. The maintenance on it. In a way, we could end up having another Collington Bridge on our hands, where all of a sudden we have nothing. So it's it's uh because we didn't want to do the repair on it, so. But and 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 yes, let's let's keep advocating. That's what we're here for. Keep advocating to to the ministers. Mentioned uh transportation and and uh forestry that, you know, this is a. A very vital, important, and and Alpac needs to, which I'm sure that they have, needs to jump on that bandwagon too, right? Everybody needs to advocate for it, so. So it's it's a very important lifeline that we have crossing the Athabasca River.
In in follow up to that, your comments have reminded me, um, one of the Alpac leaders that I, when I left off. The comment was a very pointed question is, okay, you didn't get the grant, what's your plan? And uh, you know, the response was, it's coming up on a future council agenda and we'll be back in touch. Um. But thi- this is what, you know, be great if we could actually see sort of a third, 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 which is we're close to and um.
That's the way we, that's that's the way we did, uh, excuse me, that that's the way we did some of the paving out there, some of the resurfacing of of Alpac. Uh, and and uh, grass line connector was third, 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 uh, you know, so. It'd be, it'd be great to be able to do that, so. The application of it is more prominent. Kind of scares me too that we're going to put a bunch of money into it and and not have uh owner, you know, not have the specifics on the ownership of it, but.
I'm pretty sure that that's pretty clear to the government. If we want it, it's far as like yesterday.
Counselor Holland.
Um, as part of the budget, as it's mentioned, the one point nine million is out of the reserves, is that out of our budget budget, or is that out of the loan? Budget budget? Sorry, Counselor Holland, I actually have that here for reference, just in case. Um. So uh currently, it was budgeted to hopefully come from uh STIP. Uh, of one point three, uh, other would be the Alpac contribution of proposed six hundred thousand. Um, but we did also learn through your audit process that you have a large component of unused grant funding in your C C B F. So.
And that can be redirected? Yes, fantastic.
Would we?
Used to be called gas tax, sorry.
Would we be able to get statistics for an upcoming meeting on how much that would be? I guess because this decision would have to go to council anyways, would we have those numbers when that decision comes forward?
Yes, uh, I'm very confident that we can tell you how much is remaining in your gas tax, your upcoming L G F F and your previous M S I.
Thank you. Um. Being that we can't just make the decision to spend the money today and go forward with this. I do think that it's worth requesting a specific meeting with the minister. And a trip to the spec- specifically to the city for this item because to advocate. One more time um before we make that decision. Or well, maybe not before we make the decision, but.
I was just wondering about the timeframe that we would have in the season to complete the work, uh, how much time that that. Is requiring. Do we know what, do we have an idea with that project, the timeframe for that project?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Holland, the sooner you have a decision, the better.
Would would council be agreeable to asking admin to to have a recommendation in front of us for the next council meeting that sort of proposed, here's how we'll pay for it. Here's the plan, and then at the same time, parallel to that. Be doing that other advocacy, because I think at the end of the day, this is one of those needs to get done if. To me, the question is, what if the government said, tough luck, there's no chance ever you're getting a nickel for this? We're not going to, we're not going to say, okay, well, we'll let it deteriorate. We're going to find a way to get it done. So I I would propose we ask admin to have that ready for a decision next week so that they can get going. It's already the end of July. I'm not sure, winter's coming in. Two and a half months. Um. And uh. Let's, let's get going and we can continue to try to recover some money through alternate program with the government after. So I I think that the speed that the government is going to move, you know, we're talking about twenty twenty six, twenty seven, so we're. Let's get going and and then do that other work, and then they've got the certainty to move ahead. That's what I would recommend.
Counselor Gerlick.
Since there, we were thinking about three partners and now we're talking about two partners, would there be any? Potential of of Alpac stepping up with a little bit bigger contribution. Uh, the one thing. And. The government's going to provide us with so many dollars this year and in the future and whatever. So I think our expectations could be that we would get substantial support from them in future years if we stepped up and dealt with this now. It shouldn't even give us justification. If we're, if it's going to be done, I think we got to do whatever it takes to get it underway as quickly as possible.
Repal would like to make a motion to recommend to council to pursue the required repairs to the Alpac Bridge and to continue advocacy work for cost sharing. Opportunities of this for this project.
Yep, and to me, I would interpret that to mean also those additional discussions with Alpac to say. What else is on the? But but remember, the change to schedule D or E of the property assessment thing also made some changes for them, so it. In this particular instance, it's probably not unreasonable for us to step up.
Counselor Cromwell.
Can you repeat that motion, please?
Recommend to county council to pursue the required repairs to the Alpac Bridge and to continue advocacy work for cost sharing opportunities for this project. Ready and, okay. There's no further discussion. We'll call the question, all in favor? Post. Motion passes seven and oh. Thank you. Let's move on to item two. Uh, this is regarding Township Road six eighty two and Range Road one seventy two. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Now we, getting on to topic number two here. The Range Road sixty two, or sorry Township sixty two and Range Road one seventy two, also known as the Pumonan Connector. As we see here from our transportation master plan, has the highest average daily traffic count. And is a major economic corridor. There is even a letter from the government attached to this. Now, we had discussion of asking Lacklubish if they would be able to or willing to participate in this program. That is question number one. Now, do we get a anywhere on that? Number two, no different than the conversation from point number one. This is a major route used by Alpac, one of our biggest producers within the county as well. We have the opportunity to do a section of road right now at a greatly reduced. We have the opportunity to do a section of road right now at a greatly reduced cost. With the current amount of paving being done, the director came to us and said, look, we can get this done and we can get it done much cheaper than we normally can. This section of road has the most or major complaints. We've had severe. Accidents and issues on that road from the rolling of a fire truck coming from. Black Lavish County to Athabasca County. We get, I get frequently get phone calls about busted windows. And how when that road is non-passable, people are now taking their. Their semi trucks, their log trucks, their super bees and going down the Blue Jay Road and tearing that road up because the connector is non-passable. That section of road is the quickest way for residents in the Wandering River, uh, Blue Jay. And some of the areas up there to get to a healthcare center. By cutting through and getting to the hospital in Lacklavish. Which is very vital that they have access to. Healthcare as quickly as needed. This piece of road has been on and off the books for thirty years. There is a partition, a petition rather, sorry, uh, from the nineteen nineties. That we found, Counselor Holland and I found a while back on the county server, asking for this piece of road to be done. I will take the opportunity to read an email. That was sent from a resident. Dear members of council, I'm ready to express my strong support for the paving of the Pumondon Cut Across. As a resident, I believe this will bring significant economic and safety benefits to our area. A paved road can increase property values and attract new investments. This in turn boosts property tax revenue and reduces the many maintenance costs associated with the dirt road. The Pumondon Cut Across sees regular traffic from Fort McMurray residents accessing Pumondon White Sands and Lacklavish County. As someone who works in Fort McMurray and has many friends and family there, I know how frequently this road is used, not just by local traffic, but by Fort McMurray traffic. I would also like to point out the amount of commercial traffic, including tankers and log trucks that use this cut across. The amount of commercial traffic on this road is staggering. In conclusion, paving the Pumondon Cut Across will improve property values. Reduce maintenance costs, enhance safety and support local tourism. I urge the council to approve this project. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Joseph Jenkins. That email has highlighted many of the things we've already talked about. Economic corridors, we're talking greatly about our economic development, how we can better tie in the county. This section of road is vital, not just for Lacklavish residents, not just for. East End residents. We even have staff that have to take that road on occasion and can in tap or attest to. The dire condition. We did that gravel lock three years ago. For the last year. It's been heck in a hand basket. The amount of work that road will continually need with the large amount of heavy traffic. Is unbelievable. We have an opportunity. To get this done. And make a positive impact. On the lives of residents from all over the county, the travel and from other municipalities. No different than the LPAC bridge. It is a connector. It is a vital piece of infrastructure that needs to be maintained. I would like to remind. My friends here across the table that we as a county are not here to make a profit. We are not industry. We are not a business. We are here to give back. To the residents, to the taxpayers and to our community. We have surplus. And I would also like to remind you about the one bit of information that we got back uh from C A O Beck from Municipal Affairs. We have not taken out a venture. We've not taken out a loan. We have the ability in this room to do R A F. And to approve all of these projects. We need to take out a debenture. And approve them all and make that positive impact. Get a loan. Improve our line of credit and get it done. And I'm willing to make a motion to that. But I strongly support. The need for this road to be done and not to be put off again.
Counselor Holland. Thanks very much. Um, I also agree that the uh modern connector is an extremely vital um corridor um and really important to. Not only to the Wandering River, but to outlying areas as well as um the rest of our county residents who happen to. Go that direction on a regular basis for uh whether it be work or whether it be uh recreation. I guess my question becomes is the state of the road currently. And what is the issue with um? Is it a rebuild that would be required to bring it up to um? Gravel road standard to handle that type of traffic or is it beyond? What what exactly needs to happen with that if pavement isn't happening this year?
Director Riley.
Through the chair to Councilor Holland, currently the gravel lock that was applied uh three years ago from what I'm able to assess is forcing. Some of the larger boulders that were underneath to to surface and um it is. One of the main roads that the operator in that area has to deal with because it of the traffic count, so. It it's just simply a matter of it. It is receiving gravel this year, so it is on the gravel program the entire road. Um, but uh it 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 is used more and so therefore it disintegrates faster. Uh, in order to bring it to a paving standard, it would require grade and base this year and then paving would be the year after after it settles. That's how. That's how that should be done. So. Um, so. In preparation for pavement this year, what would the cost be against the budget? Do we have kind of an estimate and what would it be next? You know, because of course we're going to split that up. The total cost provided as an estimate um by a contracting, a consulting firm was the um. Three point six. I don't have the exact breakdown of the two and I would hesitate to speak on behalf of a company, so.
Okay, no, it's just something I was thinking about with regards to um I I as far as I'm concerned, um, the county is in extremely good shape. Um, we have surplus like you, like you mentioned, uh, Cromwell, I'm not gonna uh, Councilor Cromwell, repeat everything, but um. When we look at all of the different things that we've been pushing off and pushing off for years and years and years and disintegration continues to happen and continues to increase in price, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just gonna throw it out there that I'm uh in support of all of these projects getting done and that we look at either reserves and as well as uh a loan to get them done. I mentioned a loan for Colton Bridge many years ago since it was out and uh I think that that's the direction we just need to go and we need to bite the bullet, get it done and and quit messing around.
Counselor Grog.
What is the number in the budget for capital project this year?
The the total for all capital projects, sir? Uh, the current total for all capital projects is of fifteen million four hundred and ninety five thousand eight hundred and seventy.
No, what portion do we have in the budgets like the dollars that are dedicated to capital? Like. The three or four.
The the total, the Athabasca total amount excluding grant funding, sir, I'm confused um. I don't have the exact breakdown. Uh, I can have these printed over your lunch break again for you to have a look at your capital. If you wish.
Yeah.
That's just the total cost of all projects. I don't have the breakout in my head or on this paper for what is not. What is county dollars? What is grant dollars? So.
The copy of the budget that I have in front of me says borrowing two point six million C C B F nine hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars. And M S I sixty two, six ninety three, so. Um, we have policy thirty two forty three. Currently at Athabasca County roadway paving pri- priority criteria, which outlines um the ranking matrix. For our projects. I'm wondering which projects, has this project been ranked based on our current criteria? And if so, which projects? Were ranked as well on the matrix.
Madam Chair, through research, uh, the last copy of the ranking system we could find, um, I believe was in twenty fifteen. And um. If you forgive me, I can pull that up. And let you know that there were multiple other projects above. The proposed road. Uh, I just don't know how many of them have actually been accomplished since twenty fifteen, so.
That's information that I would like to see before making a decision, just. So we make that informed decision based on our policy and. If we decide that one that's not number one is still what we want to pursue this year, I'm okay with that. I just want to be able to see it and. Know that we made that decision based on the information that we've decided we wanted to decide on. Uh, any further comments? Revo.
I'd I'd also like to see the list of options that meets uh policy thirty two forty three. You know, we we have policies around the uh equitable, fairly and consistently prioritization of roads. I I don't care about the twenty fifteen one. I mean, that's ten years old. We we should be doing the ranking right now to see what are the top five projects. And again, if we want to choose to make a decision that's outside of the number one or number two. Then that's certainly our prerogative to do, but I think we need to know what they are and we need to be able to look the ratepayers in the eye who are on the number one and number two priority and say, we bumped you for number four or number three or. Whatever um. I um. You know, this, this is a um. This particular piece of roadway, I was looking earlier at our our updated. Uh, roads report and it defines the uh describes the road as in good condition. And when you look at the chart that came in our agenda package, you know, there are other gravel roads even on that that are described in fair condition that. You know, for all material discussion, have an identical traffic count. And so I I think. We should not be making a decision based on. Receiving some some um. Feedback from ratepayers on this one in particular, because it it implies then that this that we're back to the squeaky wheel system of doing business and I. I think we should follow policy and and assess our priorities using objective criteria. I have had um. Repair reach out to me to tell me that they they can't see the justification for this kind of spend as the number one priority. When ultimately it makes a two to three minute difference on another paved road. There is a paved road that gets around that depending on how you map it, it's two or three minutes. So I I not that I would say I would never be supportive of doing it. I just don't think we have the kind of information to to say we should or shouldn't do it today. Because we don't have the, we haven't followed the policy that's in place. And. Really, um, we've gone many years without any significant amount of debt. And if we borrow, we have to talk to ratepayers. There is no way we should be making that decision at this table on a fifteen minute discussion. It is something we need to consult widely with people. And borrowing and anything. Without a thorough review of the priorities is wildly irresponsible in my mind. There's a gigantic opportunity cost when we do that and fund with our own money. So if, as an example, we want to borrow two million dollars for a project. And we pay it entirely on our own, the opportunity cost is six million dollars. We should sit down and decide what six million dollars for the projects we're putting off. Because we've spent a hundred percent of our own money. I I think that we just have to do a more thoughtful, careful job of of doing that and I'm in no rush to um. To to make an approval here without that priority list and without a better discussion with with ratepayers more widely. And just as a reference, the letter in the package is a is a mandate letter, not a letter specifically about this road.
Counselor Holland. Is there an opportunity to have a conversation with the R M W B uh in Lacklavish also to partner and look into this particular project? Since R M W B and Lacklavish use it quite often.
Administration.
I through the chair to Counselor Holland uh. It's always good to have conversations that probably would be a more political conversation than an administrative conversation, I would suggest. So. Okay. Thank you.
Is that something we want to? Consider having is. Counselor Trans.
I do really like that idea. I think it's fantastic. Living in an area that closely reaches uh the cut across um. I would say I've equally heard um from ratepayers from the um positive side of getting it done, but I've also heard. Uh, ratepayers concerns of um. Good financial spending on our accounts too. Um, for me. A hundred percent, I I think it would be in favor of it, but right now on some of the other priorities on the table takes precedence for me. Just.
Um, Director, I do have a question. In our budget, that grant funding. C C B F and M S I that we had allocated for the hard surfacing, could those be reallocated to the LPAC bridge? Repairs for that million dollars if.
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, administration has been unable to file for those particular grant fundings until you have projects to file for.
Okay. So we could file for this year and deter predetermined a hard surfacing project for next year and. Still have grant funding available for that.
Yes.
For next year's funding. Counselor Minz. No, oh, sorry. I thought you had invited me beforehand. Yep. Is there enough?
I I do, I do believe also that we need to make some. Some great or some very much. Thoughtic. Decisions on especially when we're when we're looking at doing asphalt roads. We 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 do need to make some some. Understanding why we're why we're picking this and and stuff like that. And that's what happened to council before we. We were paving roads in. Middle of nowhere and it's uh. And and that's why that policy came in to make sure that you're going to actually do the roads where where it should be done. And uh. So. Yeah, that's my point of view on it. Let's get some data.
So did you want to make a motion to direct administration to? Compile a list of. Roads and rank them based on the paving criteria?
E B, I I do, but I but I but I don't want to throw a bunch of more work onto administration and. Take away from our waterline project.
Counselor Cromer.
I appreciate the conversation. I understand that. You know, you want to see roads done in other areas as well that. May or may not be more important. We also have to realize that administration brought this forward as their recommendation of road to do. And we are here to support our admin and they know what roads need to be done. So with that, I am going to make a motion.
Order, can you clarify when they brought this as their recommendation to the road to be done? Because I haven't seen the priority list.
Uh, I believe when we had our capital project and infrastructure day, it was listed on there.
Administration, can you confirm? Is that the case or was it just a placeholder name?
Uh, through the chair to Reeve Hall, administration put it in as a recommended uh project um. It was not uh listed in a ranking as council is now requesting.
Sorry, Counselor Cromwell. Please continue.
Thank you. As such, I'm going to make the following motion. That we recommend to county council to approve the hard surfacing of Township Road six eighty two and Range Road one seventy two. And recommend to county council that administration be directed to take a debenture to complete the capital projects for twenty twenty four.
Revo.
Madam Chair, the uh motion is not in order because it does not meet policy thirty two forty three and should be ineligible.
Counselor Holland.
Um. I would like to see the motion go forward. Um, policies, uh, if we follow them to the letter and to the T. Uh, every single time I would agree, but that is not the case and we have the ability to revisit those policies.
Counselor Cromwell, could you read your motion out again a little bit slower?
Recommend to county council to approve the hard surfacing of Township Road six eighty two and Range Road. One seventy two. And to recommend to county council that administration be directed. To take out a debenture to complete the capital projects for twenty twenty four. And that would. And that would then cover all of the four capital projects. That that's up to administration. Wouldn't it be to go, we have this in reserve, we can take, this is what we need to take out as a debenture? They would have to create a a uh borrowing policy and bring it back to us going, this is what we would take out, this is what we have. In the bank. And that's up for administration to fine tune. Um doesn't mean that we have to debenture the entire lump sum. We have money in the bank.
You might want to change up your motion a bit then.
I would argue that the. Motion is disrespectful to the table as we've been trying to go through each of the points individually and you're. Trying to just tell admin to to venture for all of the projects before we've even had the opportunity to discuss them. Counselor Holland, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Oh, no, that's okay. It was just clarification on the regarding the motion and the debenture for the whole um gamut um. And then the mention of reserves, so it doesn't quite. It would need some some massaging for sure.
Would you like to make an amendment, Counselor Holland?
How about we, and you know, being that this is the committee, the whole these are recommendations and discussions. Um, do we have to vote on this motion at this time, or can we actually go through all uh four? And make one motion at the very end, or are we actually going to do each and single, every single one separately?
Well, I think we want to discuss all four.
I think so, and then. You know, is if.
But if Counselor Cromwell is looking to make the motion. We could defeat it and then continue having the discussion.
I think we need to slow down a little bit. Um, we need to slow down a little bit. We need to absolutely have a thorough discussion with with everything. Um, and I know it's not going to be a popular comment, however, when we're looking at a road that is still passable. To others that are not, as well as one that's possibly going to fall apart. Um, I would think we should have that thorough discussion.
So Counselor Cromwell has wanted to make this motion, which would push everything forward. Um. We. Figurally, we could defeat that motion and make a motion to. Look, compile a list of paving projects as per policy and then. For the discussion that way. Um. Or if the motion goes forward, then it goes. Or staples debate. Um, Counselor Mins.
Or we can, we could vote on the motion. And if it's defeated, we could actually just go back and keep discussing what we're discussing.
That makes.
It's a.
Counselor Cromwell, okay, so Counselor Cromwell wants to make the motion. It's only fair that we put the motion on the floor. So Counselor Cromwell has made the motion to recommend to County Council the hard surfacing of Township Road six eight-two and Range Road one seventy-two. And further to recommend to County Council that admin be directed to take out a debenture to complete the projects in two thousand and twenty-four.
I would like to split that question based on conversation around the table. So split it at the.
So the recommendation for debenture will be split here. So on the adoption of the motion to recommend to County Council, the hearts. Surfacing of Township Road six eight-two and Range Road one seventy-two. For completion in two thousand and twenty-four, I guess would be still part of that. Um, any discussion?
I'd like to say we're we're talking about spending significant money without having looked at our priorities, and I can't believe we're actually going to vote on this. On, we're talking about a three million dollar project. We've got members of the table who aren't even here to voice their opinion. We've not talked to our ratepayers. We've done no consultation on a three million dollar spend. It is not, this is not the way we should proceed. Um, let's like, I I agree very much. We need to make some hard surfacing. I don't know if it's pavement. I don't know if it's. Alternate projects that the CIO will provide. But I will insist that we must follow our policy. We don't have the discretion to just ignore it when it chooses us without a a vote to to violate the policy. So I I'm I'm concerned about the path we're heading and. We have not seen priorities and I agree with colleagues that I don't know that this comes. I don't have enough information to know that this comes anywhere near the top. It might be the number one project, but I would at least would like to be able to go back. To the people who we are going to end debt, like attach this bill to. And say we made the right decision because we took the time to get the data. So I'm I'm going to vote opposed.
Counselor Chamsik.
How long would it take administration to be able to compile a list of proposed projects?
Well, we don't have another committee of the whole meeting for at least a month.
Would administration see this as the same um importance of uh. Getting it. It done ASAP to be able to start comparatively to um number one.
Like Counselor Mins.
I'm I'm on the same same uh wavelength here. I I know where uh. Counselor Chamsik is going, trying to get information and all this stuff and. And and the same sort of thing, spending three point six million dollars. And and uh. Just with, just just off the cuff. I'm I'm in the same wavelength of actually taking a step back and saying, okay, is this the best project that we got? And proving it, and that is going to take time as we know, we're not even building any roads this year. Like, and 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 all of a sudden, we're going to throw onto administration, come back, come back in a month. With an actual recommendation, I think that's for administration, I think that's ludicrous. To even 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 ask them to do that because. This whole discussion is to come up with a capital project. Because we want to, we want to do a capital project, right? So. But to pick a three point six million dollar. And and whether it's in 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 uh, let's say, uh Slaughterhouse Cut Across, it's on the Alpak Road. It could be running out to Buffalo Lake on uh on 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 that road, because that's hey, that. Let's call a spade a spade, that's ready to go. You got a high, high volume surface there and. So we need to really make sure that when we do this. Like when we do hard surfacing, because it's not cheap. It's the most expensive. Uh road maintenance building. Thing you can go through, so we have to make sure that we we are doing the right thing, so. So uh, but to ask administration to come back in in a month with recommendations, I think it's. It's way too much, it's way too much. That's something that we should be actually, if we want to do road, road uh hard surfacing. We should be discussing it now the way we are and saying, okay, come back for the two thousand and twenty-five budget and and we have three. Four million dollars to spend, give us the best project. Because right now. Uh, that that's too much of an undertaking for administration.
Feel like we're starting to go round and round a little bit, so. Counselor Cromwell has tried to make a motion that's going to be split. I'm going to call the question on the adoption of that motion. And regardless of whether it passes or fails, we will break for lunch and then come back to the question. I'm sorry, but. We're uh. I think it's only fair that we deal with the motion that's on the table first, though, so. Counselor Cromwell has made the motion to recommend to County Council. The hard surfacing of Township Road six eight-two and Range Road one seventy-two. Uh, be pursued in two thousand and twenty-four. Call the question, all in favor? One, two? Okay, opposed? Five, so that motion fails, two to five. Next portion of Counselor Cromwell's motion was to recommend to County Council that admin be directed to take out a debenture to complete. The capital projects in two thousand and twenty-four. Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That motion failed, one, two, seven. So that motion is defeated. We'll now call a recess. Let's get ourselves. We are coming back from our recess to continue talking about item six point two. For the recess, um Counselor Cromwell had made a couple motions. Both were defeat. One motion was split, sorry. One motion, it was split, it was defeated. So do we want to, were there any follow-up motions to item number two, or are we going to? Move on to item number three, the Cape Ceiling? Counselor Cromwell.
Uh question through the Chair to Administration. Uh, when might we be able to see that uh ranking? List and information that we need to be able to move a project forward.
Uh, in through the Chair to Counsel Cromwell in regards to a hard surfacing project uh to. Fill out the requirements of the policy referenced, it would come for council at budget deliberation.
So. Need clarification then, so we are postponing all hard surfing projects for this year that if we have to wait till budget time?
Uh, correct.
So is that something we're really? Ready to do is go, we're not going to do any project right now.
Counselor Mins.
Not not a project. Not a capital project, but we're not going to do any hard surfacing until. We have the proper criteria in front of us to say that. You know, and maybe Plowton Connector will come out as number one. Maybe it won't. Maybe it'll be another one, but at least we have the proper criteria. Again, I go back to, we're actually spending, looking at spending three point six million dollars, pulling the trigger on three point six million dollars. When 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 there's possibly some other projects out there, so it's like. It's like bringing the proper criteria and and uh understanding because again, road. Hard surfacing is a very expensive venture to go on and. And even after you're done hard surfacing, you got to maintain it. So there's another add-on. Add-on of uh and it's a different maintenance, it's migrators no more, now it's plow trucks. So are we going to have to buy another plow truck? Because now we got. We got uh this hard surfacing done out that way, you know, there's there's other. Other information that needs to be looked at as soon as you go into hard surfacing, right? So.
So let's continue talking about the other capital projects that we. Are discussing today. Move on to item three, which is Cape Ceiling. Was originally recommended for the two roads adjacent to the airport during budget council, did not approve the location, so administration is seeking dis. Direction on locations council would agree to. Counselor Mins.
I uh, I was hoping that we would. We would, we would get on this as soon as possible. It's it's a, it's a. It's yeah, it's a maintenance, maintenance thing, and we were only looking at three, four hundred meters. Or half or eight hundred meters per road. Um, I really do believe it should be done by the airport due to the fact that it's a close. Uh, it's a close uh uh. Area to go and look at it, to go and see how it gets done and and to monitor it. Um. We we have the prior, um, we were doing these little. Experiments on Saudi Road way out north of Athabasca where. Nobody wanted to come to and and look and and we still have. Have these uh road systems there that are are experimental things there that. That can be looked at, but something close and something you can monitor and and plus we're coming off of a hard surface road onto. Gravel portion, you can, there's heavy, heavy traffic there, high volume traffic. It it just, to me, it just makes sense to do it there. The only other spot that I could really think of doing anything would be over by. Over by Alpak on the uh Durco section coming off of the highway into into Husky. Where or Greenleaf or whatever the heck you want to call it now. That is tremendous for the for the road. And that's a half mile that was just rebuilt like two years ago. We rebuilt that. There's another, so if we, let's say we wanted to do a half a mile at uh. On the airport and do a half a mile out by Alpak, hey, you're you're getting lots of truck traffic, so.
Reeve Hall.
I I think, you know, over various months, we've had conversations with our CIO who has experience from other areas and talks about. Various ways of solving problems that are a little bit less traditional than we might have. Just default to in terms of hard surfaces and so. I I also like the idea of let's let's work out a couple of test cases and see what what's the right project for our region, because if. If testing something like has been proposed at the table. You know, in a heavy truck area or another, you know, near the airport or both. If we can test some things out and figure out um that we can do that cheaper, it means we can hard surface more roads for the same money. And and I'm not really sure. I mean, as a resident, I don't care if it's pavement or if it's a hard surface. I mean, it's about rocks and dust and. And maintenance, so. Um, maybe we, maybe we have a good uh, you know, we've got a good resource, let's let's test some of these things. And I think. I don't know the the um. Traffic on the road network to the the extent of my colleague here, but I. I think those sound like pretty reasonable places because of the the heavy trucks, especially on the one by the mill.
And and the other thing about doing the hard surfacing on these two areas is. We get to the maintenance, we have plow trucks running already, so if they got it. If they got to go down and and remove the snow right there, they can do it and uh. Yeah, I I think I'd be willing to move the motion to do that. To do them two spots now, do you want to do a half mile? Do we want to do four hundred meters? It's it's may as well do a half mile, we're there. And uh go from there, but I'd be willing to move the motion for that.
So. You'd like to recommend to County Council to approve the roads adjacent to the airport and. And west of, that would be Range Road one ninety-five?
Yes.
Uh, adjacent to Greenleaf.
Counselor Holland. Did you, um, in the description, it mentions two roads adjacent to the airport. What other road?
The the. The other road, I think, or or maybe I should let administration.
Administration, could you comment on which two roads that are adjacent to the airport that you wanted to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was originally the North Road as uh currently mentioned by Counselor Mins. And the road to the airport uh to the actual entrance was the other option. Adjacent for the two roads adjacent, it would be then removing the road to the airport and changing that over to Range Road one ninety-five.
Counselor Holland.
Yeah, as a follow-up, so. In the spirit of priorities, and which ones are required to be done and which would benefit the most? Do you recommend the same as what Counselor Mins recommends? Uh, through the Chair to Counsel Holland, in this particular case, it would be a pilot project for here. Uh, those two roads mentioned by Counselor Mins uh are both very high traffic, so we can see how they hold up. Under under heavy duress.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Counselor Gerlick.
So how long has this Cape Ceiling been around and how long has their product just been used?
Uh, through the Chair to Counsel Gerlock, I don't have a start date on when this was happening, but I've known about it for about fifteen to twenty years.
It's got a good reputation.
Very good reputation.
All I worry about is another fire mat or.
Uh, no, I'm Cape Ceiling has gone through iterations of naming. Some people call it chip ceiling, some people call it cap ceiling. The quote obtained from one of the contractors calls it Cape Ceiling, so it's uh. Had many iterations.
Reeve Hall?
Is this the same as that MG thirty product then that is done by Cortec or whoever?
Uh, through the Chair to Reeve Hall, uh, MG thirty is an incorporated version of dust suppression.
Any further comments, Council Chamsik, you have your microphone on? So, Councilor Minz has made a motion to recommend to County Council to approve the road at north of Highway fifty five adjacent to the airport and west of Range Road one ninety five adjacent to Greenleaf Fuels for twenty twenty four Cape ceiling pilot projects. Is that correct? Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the question, all in favor. That is eight and oh. We will move on to item number four, which is Bridge File one three eight three three, Collington Bridge. Council has already approved the amount of, I believe, six hundred, hmm, six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand this year. Uh, to have the bridge removed. The bridge that administration receives the most calls about is Bridge File thirteen eight thirty three. Administration is recommending that council move forward with engineering for a new bridge in the twenty twenty four year with a view to tender and replace in twenty twenty five. The bridge has been denied twice for STIP funding from the government of Alberta. Any comments? Reeve Hall?
This is really, uh, you know, clearly very important to the helmet of Collington and the residents there and I'm, I think you said we've allocated funding for, uh, for engineering, we did that, I think in twenty twenty three. And so for me, I think we need to do a better job of communicating our, uh, and providing updates to our residents on the advocacy around this. And while it's been denied twice, I guess I'm wondering if admin would provide us an opinion on the potential for, or the likelihood. How likely you think it might be to be approved in a twenty twenty four application? If it's more or less shovel ready for, for work in twenty twenty five, if the, uh, go ahead is given. In the first instance, it was, it was submitted with a, a group of other bridges, so we received I wanted my memory close to four million dollars that year, but it was, there's quite a few things that came back approved in year one. This wasn't one of the top ones, but it, it was in that group. In the second year, I mean, we ended up with that sixteen million dollars worth of other money, so I I kind of feel like I can rationalize why the ministry may have in trying to give you up scarce resources, said, look, we're giving out sixty million bucks on the water program. We can't add another three or four, whatever this bridge is going to cost to, to, in the same year. So if, if we come into a, uh, you know, a fresh year, no ask for LPAC, the other projects we've got money for underway and in, in the works, um, do you think we have a pretty good shot at, at seeing some positive results? Like what would your? Obviously, you're not in the Ministry's office, but in your experience.
CIO, do you have any?
Um, I, absolutely, we should make it a priority application. And if it's absolutely clear that that's the only one we're making application for this year, then we should emphasize that. And being clear on that from now to then, that gives, you know, all of us a chance to really um, put pressure on our elected officials at the provincial level, whether it's an RMA or summer barbecue circuit or wherever you see them to, to know that this one's coming and this one's a priority.
Council Holland?
Thank you, um. I personally think the Collum Bridge is something that needs to be done, needs to be done yesterday. Um, however, when we're considering, um, pushing it forward for another round of uh, STIP funding requests, um, what does that leave off of our docket for to ignore if, you know, we keep asking for the same one, we've been denied twice. Are there other ones that, you know, are not going to happen because we're going to try this one again? Um, we've been throwing money at it in little bits and little pieces to the point that, um, I'm curious what the engineering cost would be. Uh, engineering for a new bridge in the twenty twenty four year, what, what is that cost?
Uh, through the Chair to Council Holland, it can, can range based on the situation. Um, the engineering's been done for the removal, uh, I would hesitate to guess or anywhere between seventy five and a hundred and seventy five. Just because I, I can't nail down an exact, sorry.
Which isn't a horrible nasty number, um, to add to this list here today or, well, in, in council meeting coming up. Um, so I'm definitely, you know, we can't obviously put a temporary bridge there, we had that kind of a little bit of a conversation that that's just not a place to, to deal with, but you know, that situation can't happen. So, um, I think we need to move forward with this, I think we need to get the engineering done. We need to plan to, um, replace it. But I am a little hesitant to ask for a third STIP funding application, what that does to the other projects that we have that are needing to be done.
Council Cromwell and then Councilor Minz.
Thank you. Uh, through the Chair to the Director, a few questions, so again, tell me to hush when you need a minute to catch up. Uh, remind me, how long has that bridge been out? Ballpark.
Uh, for, give me, Council Cromwell, it's definitely been closed for at least a year. I don't know exactly how long it's been closed for.
Okay, and what was the daily traffic count on that bridge prior to closing?
Uh, through the Chair, I'd have to email you that information.
Okay. So my question then is, as that bridge is currently out already and alternate routes being used, are there not other bridge files that would be better suited to get replacement and or heavy maintenance while we have that money allocated? Where we already currently have a bypass route to the Collington Bridge. Are we saying that this is the top bridge in the entire county? That is due for replacement, I understand that it's closed and that people are having to work around, but using the same logic we've heard around the table today, is that the top piece of infrastructure to do? Second point on that one. If we are denied for STIP funding, which I believe it is completely ill advised to put all of our eggs in one basket, what would be the estimated cost of having to replace that bridge out of pocket for the county? Uh, do you have the budget in front of you and hopefully can shoot me an answer there?
Uh, through the Chair to Council Cromwell, the estimated cost of project replacement is one million four hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. The answer to whether it's the top project, yes, rated by our consultant who does our bridge, uh, infrastructure. They rated that one as the top one, which is why it was submitted for the county infrastructure side and apart from the LPAC Bridge. Uh, there was a second one which we held back because the priority was the Collington Bridge.
But I, I appreciate that, so I would definitely like to know what the, uh, daily traffic impact is on that location. Pardon me? Right now it's zero.
Council Minz?
I'm just, uh, I'm just wondering if, 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 I've, I've mentioned it before, but have we looked at going around? Going going around. There's a mile and a half road that, uh, could be built and and we don't have to put a bridge yet. To, and I have to move farther away when I say it. But, but that's, that's, I always look at, 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 uh, if there's a way that we don't have to put that infrastructure back in to actually fall apart in years and years from now. If we can just go, go around it with a road, it'd be, uh, way more feasible now, I don't know if it's been looked at or I have no idea about wetlands or any other stuff along there. So just throwing that out there.
Administration probably doesn't have an answer for that today. Thank you, Council Capitania. Oh, hold on, you're still muted.
Sorry, I, I do apologize, when my video is on, you all sound like robots, but when it's off, I can hear you, so that's why I have my camera off, but I'm the one speaking, so I don't sound like a robot right now. Um, I, you, thank you for letting me weigh in on this. Um, I really truly believe that the residents of this community and county have been patient and, um, that is not going to last forever. I think that we have tried our best, we've looked at all the options. But I do believe that we just need to replace our infrastructure and I think that in this instance, um, you know, it, it would be very hard to get those traffic counts as, um, Reeve Hall said, because the traffic is zero. But as we know, um, there is no access to the fire hall for anyone on other side of the bridge uh, other than from Athabasca, the bus routes have had to completely change, adding time to their morning and evening commutes. Um, we do know that the ambulance, um, has mistakenly gone down that road on more than one occasion and in one occasion potentially causing the loss of someone's family member. Um, this is a well-traveled road and whatever it was fifty or sixty years ago when that bridge was put in for the future community, it eventually wore out, like anything, our homes were out, our cars were out, we were out. It is our duty to put in a bridge for the future, for the next fifty or sixty years. It's not that we don't do things because they're going to fail in the future, everything fails. It gets worn out, it needs to be fixed. And I don't believe that we are not in a place that we can't do that. I think that people have waited, they've been vocal, but they are also going to get very impatient and I don't think it's fair on our administration to be having to take complaints and abuse because we are sitting basically on our hands waiting for the government to hand us an allowance. We've asked, we've asked, let's move on, and that's, that's where I stand.
You, um, in, at our January tenth, twenty twenty three regular county council meeting, we approved a budget of two hundred thousand dollars from our unrestricted reserves for the engineering of the Collington Bridge and Bridge File seven three oh eight one. Can you tell us how much of that budget has been spent on the engineering or how much of it would be remaining?
Madam Chair, I would have to bring those numbers back to you.
Thank you, to, um, you know, looking at other alternatives is always a good thing. Um, the mile and a half road to rebuild, what does that normally cost to build a mile and a half of road? You know, on a ballpark, big ballpark. Cause it's not exactly, I mean, it's there's some issues in that area as well.
On average, uh, through the Chair to Council Holland, on average, um, we generally quoted out for our developers at forty a meter of, uh, one forty a meter, sorry.
I need to get a calculator.
How many meters in a mile?
You know.
It's your two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
How much?
Two twenty five.
Two twenty five. Two hundred and twenty five thousand just to build a road.
Huh, that seems slow.
It does seem very low.
That would be on the low side.
Very much.
WSP report has it at like cost per mile between four eighty and five sixty for regrading with ground surface.
And I think at about one point three kilometers north of the trailhead there, there is, and you would need a bridge culvert of some sort as well. Um, so, um, I think your cost is better to just, let's replace the bridge. And I really appreciate what Council Capitania said and I echo that. It's also impacting the subdivisions on the other side of that, uh, community as well and, uh, I hear about it regularly as well. And I'm also familiar with the, uh, the incident with the ambulance and that is really unfortunate and, um, these are things that we shouldn't have closed roads that impact, uh, families in that way.
So, Director, can you just refresh our memory? In this year's budget, we have allocated to remove the existing bridge structure because the timeframe, you could only do one.
Yes, Madam Chair, based on the wrap period, fish, wildlife, oceans, fisheries, et cetera, you can only work in a set timeline period starting after July fifteenth, so.
And in our five-year capital plan, we already allocated two point one million dollars to this bridge structure for the reconstruction for next year. We just didn't, uh, stipulate what the funding source was at.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, that was in the hopes that we would see the STIP funding, so.
Okay. Somebody, um, so what we, what we're looking for, sorry, is money for engineering to to complete the engineering for the replacement at this time, right? So we're looking to make a motion um, to recommend to County Council to approve the funding to complete the engineering for the replacement of this bridge structure.
I'll be happy.
Capitania, did you want to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, I would like to make that motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Count Reeve Hall?
Just for clarity, um, it's like if I don't know, we, we all went bonkers and just decided to write the check this afternoon, which of course we can't, but is it too, it's too late in the year to, to actually do the work this year, so regardless of what's happening, we're talking about getting the work done in twenty twenty six, so there still is that opportunity for us to submit for STIP, try to find the funding. Twenty five, sorry, twenty twenty five, good, uh, good, thank you. Um, I mean, you're then ahead of my time, Joe would say. It's, uh, a- and then there's that, through the budgeting process, there's that opportunity to talk about, okay, well, do we allocate money for funding it a hundred percent out of internal resources? Or do we allocate out of, you know, STIP, but I think there it creates opportunity for us to still apply for STIP and and once we get into next year, look at where, where we're at and it might be the case that if, you know, we'll, we'll get the STIP funding and we can save our own resources or we won't and we'll have made a decision through the budget process about how we fund it. You know, whether it's entirely with our own or, or some other manner.
Council Holland? Go ahead.
Well, and, and as much as I, we mentioned again to, uh, look at it for STIP funding, we have, um, surplus and reserves that would easily cover the one point five mil, uh, for the replacement. And so the motion basically was for engineering only, correct? We didn't mention, I, can you read the motion again?
Um, because the Director said that due to the time constraints of the environmental stipulations, we wouldn't be able to complete the actual replacement this year.
But in the motion, did we mention, because it does mention here with a view to tender and replace in twenty twenty five, did the motion include that?
It did not. But I think it's just because it's already in our capital plan, quick funding for next year.
Okay. Um, are we able to add in, in with a view to tender and replace in twenty twenty five in the motion, does that?
With the intent?
Of the intent?
Well, Madam Chair, we, the motion should probably be for, to bring it ahead for twenty twenty five budget deliberation. Like all the other capital projects, right?
Thank you.
Uh, CIO, do we need a motion to bring it forward for budget deliberation, seeing as it's already in our capital plan?
Not really, because if, if council then, uh, adopts the motion to let us go ahead with engineering, we're going to include it for deliberation in twenty twenty five and then, and then ask for a council motion for us to apply for STIP as well.
Everybody's on the same page then?
I believe Council Holland asked, can you repeat that motion though?
The motion on the table is to recommend to County Council to approve the funding to complete the engineering for the replacement of the Collington Bridge. Do you have a comment, Council Minz, or are you trying to vote early?
I, excuse me, I, I just like to have we looked at, at going around with the road? Or are we just saying that it can't be done because of this and it can't be done because of that? Have we actually went out there and looked to, to as administration went out there and, and scouted it or anything to to say, cause like, like we're, we're, they're game, we're spending million and a half to two million dollars where we might not have to spend that much to go around. So it's, it's like, I would, I would like to see it actually being looked at. Can this happen? And then, then it's a yes or no, it's not a well, maybe, or maybe not, or I would like to see it actually being scouted and, and not engineered, just.
So you'd like to see an assessment of?
Yeah, assessment of, of, of the actual road going around and in that way we have an idea.
I think that's lightly competitive to the motion on the table, so it could be another motion after the fact.
I'll do a motion after the.
It's not. It's not really a great addition to it.
Does that road or that creek not have to be crossed somewhere?
It's already crossed when you.
You, you're, you're heading north to the west of the creek already, where he's proposing. So immediately west of the creek, there's a road that runs north, that's one the council is proposing going up. Well, no, it doesn't cross the creek because you're already on the west side. And the bridge we're talking about replacing takes you from the east side to the west side. So if you start on the west side, you don't have to cross it because you're on the west side.
So how do you get to the east side?
Come back around through town. It's right at the corner when you're coming into Collington, just before the bridge.
Council Capitania.
Hi, thank you. Um, I was gonna say, I think that that question was competing to this, uh, topic. Um, I will say that if that was an idea, um, that could have come up two years ago and actually already have that answer. Um, and sure, I am all forgetting information, but I will not support it if it competes with anything that interferes. Interferes with the timeline for engineering. Thank you.
Councilor Menz, you're not recommending that we don't pursue the engineering, right? You're. We can still pursue the engineering, right, to shovel ready, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Both options to consider.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I, I just wanted, I just want to prove in that, that. It doesn't make more sense to go around. That's what we're looking at when we start building roads and start, uh.
Counselor Holland and Gurlik. Thank you. Okay, so the motion on the floor. Is to recommend a county council to approve the funding to complete the engineering for the replacement of the Collington Bridge. On that, we'll call the question. All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Councilor Gurlik, how do you vote? You're opposed, okay, thank you. That motion passes seven to one. Councilor Menz?
So I'd like to move a motion to, hmm, uh, do a. Study or an assessment on, on the, uh, road allowance, uh. Two twenty-three. From, from the Lower McNabb to, to.
Hold on, you gotta slow down on that part.
From six five four.
Yeah, six five four.
So two, two, three and six, five, four, south a mile and a half.
Yeah. For assessment for, uh, possible road construction.
South for a mile and a half.
Oh, yeah, the trail is all in, well, and that's, that's the biggest thing, eh?
So Councilman's making a motion to recommend a county council to direct administration. To analyze the potential for construction of a road from Range Road two twenty-three. To Township six fifty-four south. Oh, so from.
From six five four.
And. Sorry, I'm trying to write really fast. That makes more sense. South. Let's. Any comments on that motion? Councilor Capitania.
Um, I just, uh, through the chair to, um, administration, I am not. Coming into this council with a great knowledge of road construction, um, what are, what would be a general timeline? And a cost for such an assessment?
Director?
Through the chair to Council Capitania, uh, the cost for the assessment based on. One, we just did on another area for assessment is approximately sixty-five thousand. And may then devolve into things like. Do we need a wetland study? And I can't give you the ifs and whens of that, having not laid eyes on the area in question, so.
So ideally, it's not just something you go drive a truck out, take some pictures and then say yes or no, just checking, thank you.
So being that this is a recommendation to council. Um, when it came to council, would there be a ballpark? I mean, we would have to approve some budget to this item at that time, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we can bring a ballpark back to council.
If it passes.
And just out of curiosity, how long does it take to build a mile and a half of road? Like what kind of a delay would that be? If we didn't replace the bridge in twenty twenty-five, what type of a delay are we looking at for building a road?
Director.
Yes, through the chair to Council Holland, um, once council sets their priorities on what they see as most important or not important for the twenty twenty-five year. We'll let you know how long it will take.
Council Cromwell?
Thank you. I understand what my friend across the table is asking for with that. But I echo Council Capitania with questioning on. On financial cost and timeline, and then the update from the director. As to what may or may not additionally be involved. Thankfully here, we are committee only and have. Really no bite to our bark, as it were. So bringing it up to county council with the understanding then. That if the dollar figure does not make sense for what we're looking at to. End its life at that point and not carry that project any further. With that understanding, I'll support the motion. Um. With heavy anticipation of good news from my friend to my right.
Any further comments on the adopt, on the motion to recommend to county council to direct administration to analyze the potential construction of a road? From Range Road two twenty-three and Township Road six fifty-four south.
Right, can I just add that I, I think, you know, given the dollars we've allocated as a group already to solving this problem, like I. One of the questions that often comes back to me, because we get talking about the bridge. What we're really talking about is transportation from the, the Hamlet north. What problem we're trying to solve? And I, I think that. I'm curious to, to say, let's look at the alternatives. And I think there should be no doubt about our commitment to trying to find a solution to the problem and maybe. You know, maybe the director will go out there and say. This isn't even worth spending ten dollars on a study for. I, I had a walk and, you know, got my dog sprayed and not get bitten by those dogs and. Um. And it's something we just won't want to, uh, take up at all based on the, the first visual look, but I. I think that it's important and I appreciate that, uh, as a table, we seem willing to. To explore creative ways to solve the problem. With. You know, solutions that are maybe potentially innovative or cheap.
Yeah, any further comments? We'll call the question, Councilmen's.
I, I honestly think that the same way. If, 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 if a person walks out there and all of a sudden there's a, there's a quarter mile of wetland to go through. It's, it's, it's probably a no-go. It's, it's like, it's an understanding that when you go out there and you look at this, if there's a huge ravine that you're looking at, well. Chances are, no, th- this is not the best way to go. I, I, you know, that. And then, and then, but if, if it looks actually like it could be. Uh, 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 possibility, well then let's throw a little bit of money in there and make sure. But, but if it looks like it's absolutely a no-go, well, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not. And I guess we will go off of experience.
Yeah.
To be clear, um, Madam Chair, what we're likely going to be doing is just asking one of our trusted consultants, whether it be WSP or another one. Go out there, have a look and give us a price for a little pre-design study. Not the full-blown, full-meal deal to tell us if it can be done. Order of magnitude of costs, and it's going to be very high, high level, not a lot of detail. So that council could make an informed decision, that's all. And then they'll give us a price to do that.
Okay. So no further comments? In the adoption of the motion to recommend to county council to direct administration to analyze the potential construction of a road from Range Road two twenty-three? And Township Road six fifty-four south. All in favor? Post?
Nay.
No, motion is defeated four and four.
Yeah.
I believe that concludes item six point two. For today. Next item on our agenda is item. Six point three. Strategic priorities update. Uh, we looked at our strategic priorities at the June twenty-seventh county council meeting and. We asked for. Estimated timeframes to complete each high priority item to be brought today for discussion. Anybody have any comments or questions about this? CAO, no?
Madam Chair, we, we, uh, put together a list, we commented on the medium ones too, but I know council really only. Asked for the high priority items to have a comment on timeline, so they're in the report.
Any comments, questions about this item? None. Council Cromwell? Council Cromwell has made a motion to accept the update as information. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor?
I.
And that motion passes eight and O. Thank you. Item six point four. Council compensation review. So on page ninety-three of your agenda package. Uh, Council Cromwell, discussion?
Well, no one else is willing to put their hand up to begin the talk, so, uh, I'll take one for the team and bring it on. Uh, question, I believe where we left it last time, we were going to ask our consultant. To, where we were discussing changing the number of meetings from the twenty-four to a more realistic figure. To be fair to our colleagues around the table for that number. Now they had listed a twenty-four meetings throughout the year, that was including county council only. Not factoring in, uh, committee of the whole. Which currently does not include budget of budget and policy review. Um. So what I would like to do, if there's no other motion at the end of our discussion. Uh, is to make a motion to direct administration to have improved consulting. Uh, do a re-figure with forty-four meetings per year. And that would. Give fairness to. The number of required non-committee meetings, so that would include county council, committee of the whole. And a few budget and policy meetings thrown in there, and then we can make a proper informed decision. Now, that being said. Um. Looking at what was brought back and standing by what I have said before. I wholeheartedly believe that a per diem model is not the way that we should be going. And that it should be changed to a strict honorarium and mileage. Uh, method. And I will, uh, let the conversation go from there and then, uh, jump in on round two.
Thank you. And sorry, I just made a note. So that was to ask the consultant to update the number of meetings. Okay, thank you.
I believe, sorry, that was, as Council Wallach is not here, that was a point that she had made. And I want to make sure that that is remembered by the floor to be, uh, more inclusive of what the required. Council meetings are.
Thank you. Council Holland.
Thank you. Um, as much as I appreciate, um, the request, I think it was very well. Explained in an email we received, um, from CAO that, um. When the consultant did his work, he based it on similar workloads. Um, that we have to other municipalities. We also, um. Were reminded we can be doing an efficiency assessment as well to, um. Make things a little more streamlined in how we do it. Um, so I'm not in favor of further asking the consultant to. Add more information that, uh, he already mentioned, I believe in the meeting that said it wouldn't make that much of a difference, so, um. I'd be more in the, in the inclined to, I agree with you, the per, uh, perdiems is not the way to go. Uh, I believe it was on page one twenty-one, the recommendation A is where. Uh, I recommended that last time and I maintain that today.
Further comments?
What, I can have your turn? Thanks, Joe.
Uh, Council Capitania.
I.
There, we can hear you now. Oh, no.
I get muted, because I have a fan going, I'm sorry, it's hot in here, um. I am. In favor of re, of looking at it again, I do agree that, um, we spent a lot of time on it. Um, and that we had different advice and that it could be worked out better. Um, it is. Not where we want it to be, and so we found that out, and I think that it's a good thing to be able to step back and say, you know, we. Had an idea, we didn't get to where we want to be, maybe we made a wrong choice or took a wrong direction, but come back and reassess it. Um, but I will stand by that we are not doing this for ourselves, we're doing this for the future. The council before us had a model that worked and especially worked when they. Unfortunately, didn't have to leave their house for two years to do meetings, um. And that, I know, is something I hope never happens again to councils of the future. But it's easy to, to not. Uh, think about time. When you can zoom into every meeting, you don't have time travel, you don't have overnights, you don't have conferences to attend that are three to four days at a time. And again, I know it's been said before, but I'm going to repeat it. If we want to attract people of all different. Um, wisdom and experience, we need to expect that in this generation, there are going to be expenses that come with that. And that is time off work, that is childcare, that is. Um, something that maybe has not really been looked at in councils of the past. I want to be a progressive council and I want to. Uh, leave a term knowing that at the next election, people will want to run. Because they know that they have something great to offer and will not have to give up. Um, I, I don't want to use their, their lifestyle, but. How about take on financial stress to be of service to their community? Nobody is. Coming into this position because it's better. Pain than what they're already doing generally. So I really want us to take a step back and think about that. It's not just, it's not us, it's the future. And I know there are many young people coming up in our community that are going to be of great service. And I want to see them want to do this job and I think we need to encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Cromwell?
Just a question that, uh, I'm sure everyone around the table is going to love, especially our friends from administration. With what Councilor Capitania mentioned, have we ever thought about, uh, switching and doing our meetings in the evening after the, uh, regular workday? For those people that have to work and have childcare? And, uh, follow our friends from the village and the town and do our, our evenings here versus our day.
I. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, that has not been considered at the county council level, but, uh.
Madam Chair, I've been here ten months and it hasn't been discussed, except by the Reeve in the last couple of weeks, um. Uh, all I've, hmm, heard in other counties that have wanted to do this, when you have a, a bit of a drive. Um, from some of the, for the, some of the furthest counselors, it makes for an awfully long night when they have to drive home at ten thirty, eleven at night. You're the one that would have to drive the farthest, if you don't mind, then, um. That's, there are some considerations, that's all.
Through the chair to administration, it, it was. Not as a, hey, I think we should do this, it's something that maybe we can think about and understanding that I don't mind driving at night, but. Perhaps the next elected official from Division Three or Division Six or Division One won't want to drive at night, I just figured it, uh, was worthy of. won't want to drive at night, I just figured it was worthy of bringing up.
I don't mind driving at night, but I will note that the daycare is not open in the evenings. Thank you.
I wanted to mention that too, that all of a sudden now we have, uh, administration coming in at night. Uh, these aren't, these aren't, uh, town meeting or a village meeting or something like that, where it's, it's, it's an hour meetings, these look at today, she's an all-day event. Like, like, are we going to go into the middle of the night, at midnight, all of a sudden? We're looking for coffee and crumpets all of a sudden, because, you know, like, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how you'd make the meetings, uh, shorter or something like that. But whatever.
Counselor Chamsik?
Yeah, um, I personally speaking to the things that Counselor Capitanic spoke to, um, between things like, uh, daycare and childcare and, you know, being overtired, it is a job that, uh, does require a fair amount of attention and it could definitely lead to some fatigue and um, it's best to have better critical thinking skills during the daytime, in my opinion.
I think that one of the things that I have been complimented on the most in the community since we were elected is the diverse group sitting at this table. And how in the last election, really, there was almost somebody from every background elected in our region to sit here and bring different views. And I worry that if we change the compensation too much, that only people who have a guaranteed second income would be able to run, um, for these positions and I'm not saying that those are terrible people to have at the table, but it it would definitely have to factor into certain people's decisions, and I think that would make it really difficult to have this, the diversity that we've seen this council turn, sit at this table again. When we discussed the council remuneration policy, we discussed it at six committee of the whole meetings and then a council meeting before we passed it. And one of the things that I keep going back to is that it states that any resulting recommendations from a third-party review, if approved by council, will be effective at the beginning of the subsequent council term. So while we may rework the policy and make some amendments, I would stand by that, that those amendments would be taking effect for the next council term. And maybe we make them now so that people who are considering running in the next term know exactly what they're walking into, um. I also think it's, we've done a lot to be more open and honest about the workload that we face too, and I think that's something that a lot of us may have been misled to believe the workload prior to our terms. So I think we've done a lot there, I think, um, if we make any recommendations, I would advocate for them to take place, take effect for the next council term. As part of that process. Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you, and, and I appreciate your words, Madam Chair. But I would like to remind committee that policies and bylaws of council are there for us to amend or break as we deem required, and that we had no problem having that compensation uh, take effect immediately and not the next following term. And I personally uh, find it a little bit distasteful that we would hide behind policy to reduce wage, yet break policy to increase wage.
When did we break policy to increase the wage?
When we added, when we changed compensation package and had our new wage take effect now, not at the next term.
But this policy was in place then, so.
Yeah, but out of spirit, it should be no different for us to go, look, we made an error, if that is the decision, that we made an error and change that. I think we should be able to make that change when and if that decision is made.
Any further comments at this time? Reeve Hall?
You know what, one of, uh, one of the comments at this table previously has been to to, uh, this is the type of decision that we should work to find a consensus on. And I think that's wise advice. Um, I would propose that if we're looking and thinking about who we want to attract in the future and who you want to fill the roles, that really a system that a base and a per diem is, the, the report tells us, um, should net out very similarly, if, uh, there's a really balance in the division of work. But the reality is that there, there are individuals who, because of their, you know, personal circumstances, will take on more committees and others who choose or ask to take on less. And, you know, we see that at our table, we see that even in neighboring, um, with our neighbors where some individuals, because they're employed in, uh, types, certain kinds of work, can't always take daytime meetings, so they they relinquish that and other, other colleagues step up and take more, I think, I think on balance, the total is similar in terms of the spend on counselor compensation, but it allows, um, equitable compensation when you've got some folks who are maybe more active than others. And, um, so I, I think that, uh, if, if we've made a decision based on, you know, advice that was in hindsight less than sound, we need to be open to discussing it, but it's one that we, um, we shouldn't rush to, to come to a conclusion, we should try to make sure we figured out what is the consensus at the table, what makes the most sense, and and then depending on what changes we make, we have to also, uh, ensure that there's underlying policy to support the choice we make. Because right now the policy reads, you know, very clearly one way, so to flip to a base only doesn't actually align with the way the policy is written, so we have to work through that document as well. And update that. And my, my bias, I think, is the, uh, for the long term is to look to, um, the split model. But also, um, you know, if we're, if we're trying to find, uh, good candidates and be balanced, I'm, I think, let's, let's talk about it if we, if we, uh, want to consider it a, a well-paying part-time job, then maybe nighttime meetings are okay, because it allows people to, to hold down those other full-time employment that, uh, and, and we just need to figure out how we manage the things we do and what we do and fit it in to evening-type meetings and maybe that even means three a month. But I think, like, if we're going to talk about a restructure, let's have a talk about a restructure.
Counselor Holland? Thank you. Um, as much as, you know, we have this conversation about, you know, who, who we would like to attract to this job, let's remind ourselves, we didn't have a problem putting our hat in the ring with what we were, what we, what was being offered at the time. Um, we didn't want to make any changes. It was, you knew what you were getting when you came in, you're volunteering for committees, you're doing as you do, and now it's a big change. I'm also concerned about the workload being created um, unnecessarily by people in their choice of how they choose to do the job. Um, and that is also a deterrent for other people who would like to put their hat in the ring. I, uh, if you're making the job into a full-time job, that's a personal choice, it's not required to be a full-time job. Um, if you're lacking, needing to do more research, needing to spend that time, I mean, I'm one of those people who will do that, but I'm also not afraid to ask administration for that, for that information, as it should be coming from administration and not from individual counselors. So, um, I think we've been around this so many times, and this is such an incredible waste of time to keep going around and around and around. It is embarrassing, number one, to our, to see how our public has reacted to this. Our residents are not happy. They're not happy with not only this, but they're not happy with a lot of things that are going on at this table. Um, so instead of keeping messing around and messing around, can we just put this thing to an end? I think we're never going to have a hundred percent all agreeance on the consensus. We need to get this policy rewritten, and we need to get these wages where they should be, not high-end, but where they should be. And I'm tired of the conversation. It needs to stop and we need to move forward with this properly.
Any further comments? Counselor Minz?
I'll go back to when I, when I threw my name in to, to, to run for council. And I remember we were all sitting there and, and we all virtually said we weren't going to be that council that takes takes a big pay raise, and, and I, and I keep going back to that, like, I keep going back to that, that time, and, and all of a sudden out of what I, what I feel was completely bad advice, we, we decided to take this big pay raise. And it wasn't really questioned, I remember through the meetings now, we didn't really question it because we didn't see no numbers, but as soon as the numbers came up, bang. It was a red flag, it was like, all of a sudden, we are one of them councils that are taking a huge pay raise, and, and, uh, so administration went and got a, a wage, wage study done on, on, uh, on the employees, which was a perfect time for us to do a wage study that should have happened, uh, through the third party. It's a perfect time for us to do the wage study on ourselves, and, uh, that study brought over the, some red flags. So I think it's quite, I don't know what we should do. It's, and, and I go back to I think we were given some, some, some bad advice and, and, and again, nobody noticed it until the numbers came out, and that's when everybody, that's when people started stepping back, so I'd like to get this figured out, because I think, uh, we attract people to run for council by doing the right things, and they want to, they want to pursue the, the, the the betterment for the community and, and everything like that, it's if we start running for council because the money is there, that's, that's not, that's not the people you want to attract. And, and my thoughts. You want to attract the people who want to do something for the community. And that's the way I'm looking at it. You need to get this figured out. I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to me actually saying with the paper sitting here that, that, that I voted wrong, on that advice. And I, and I want to fix it. You know?
Counselor Holland?
Let me, uh, if the discussion is, is fairly complete, I'd like to put a recommendation that we recommend to council to adopt the, uh, report recommendation one A with mileage. And have it applicable immediately.
Think we would have to amend that policy?
Absolutely.
Reeve Hall?
Um, just as a, sometimes we talk about, I agree, the advice wasn't great. We maybe didn't make, you know, based on the best advice we had, we made what seemed like a good decision at the time, which was, let's remember unanimous decision. The difference in dollars between the eighty-eighth percentile and the fifty-seventh is about four thousand dollars a year. So we're like, just so that we don't get this out of proportion for anybody on the outside who's looking, it's not like, there's some gigantic egregious change that's, that's happened. Um, we're talking about tweaking of a couple of thousand dollars, one way or the other, between where we might have been, where we should ended up and where we should have been. And I, um, I think there's an, you know, still enough to talk about here. I, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the the honorary model and, and thinking if we're going to change back to that, we should make sure that J R R, I R R, I can't read that letter, like, we should make that down to a hundred and two for everybody. Not a hundred and ten for some and a hundred and two for others. So I would propose an amendment to, if we're going to pursue that model, that the salaries be recalculated, so the, I think that's a J R R, the J R R is a hundred and two percent across the board.
Counselor Gerlick, you haven't timed in yet on this conversation, did you have any comments?
No.
Counselor Chamsik?
Well, I am also for the honorary model and, um, mileage. Uh, we have, uh, gone over this song and dance several times over, um. I always look forward to hearing my fellow colleagues', um, opinions, whether they're differing or not. Um, but so far, I agree, when we first came into this, uh, for close to the first two years, it wasn't even on my radar, wasn't even in my consideration to be changing, um, our salary and how we get paid, and, uh, I particularly on the information, I will agree, I voted in a way that, uh, with poor information, um, and I think you're right. Coming back and fixing it is the answer, in my opinion, and I do value every one of my fellow colleagues here, and I just want that to be noted as well.
Counselor Holland, I know you wanted to make a motion. I don't believe that that procedurally would be correct, so we could ask admin to amend the policy and bring it back, and then by adopting a new policy is how you would make the amendments you're looking for? Um, which amendments would you like to see made? Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Thank you. Um, in this policy, I think it is so incredibly convoluted and onerous to not only follow, but to execute. Uh, administration is probably weighed down, um, unnecessarily with all of the insanity in the policy. I think that administration would do very well at coming back with a one-page policy like we had before, it's, um, I would like to see it be honorary model plus mileage.
So you're looking to direct admin to draft a new policy? Basically?
Basically, yep.
Sorry, I'm just uh, same title? Elected officials?
Yep.
Policy incorporating an honor, sorry.
Incorporating the recommendation one A plus mileage.
From the compensation review. To be reviewed at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting? So I'm going to read this back just to make sure I've got it. Made sure I've got what you think. So to direct administration to draft a new elected officials remuneration and expenses policy incorporating recommendation one A plus mileage from the compensation review to be reviewed at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting.
Committee of the whole or council, whatever works best for administration's time.
Leave the whole or council?
Yep, please.
And questions on the, uh, Counselor Capitanic?
Uh, yes, thank you. So if we are talking about re uh, doing the policy and making it simpler, um, I would be, uh, interested to know if, um, Counselor Holland sees, uh, six point one, the basic honorarium, and what is included in that, stay the same? And that anything that would have been under perdiems, um, be listed as voluntary for future councils?
I don't think it would be listed necessarily as voluntary, I think it is encompassed in the salary, um, that we have been presented with, so it would all just fall under honorarium.
Um, I, I, I beg to differ, um, because part of, part of us not, maybe some of us understanding the workload, uh, it does come down to committees and conferences, and I do think that you cannot mandate someone to attend conferences, and you really cannot mandate someone to attend voluntary committees. So, and we didn't do that, that's why we put it under perdiems. And so I just want, don't want to see that change, we can't just start like, mandating that people travel if they can't afford to do so. They can't afford to take four days off work for a conference, they cannot be um, I want to say punished for that, because they're not um, I want to say punished for that because they're not technically paid for that anyway. I'm not saying you wouldn't do it and it's not part of your job, but you can't, you, I, I don't see taking these two lists, the, what was included in honorarium? And then what was included in per diem? And then all of a sudden saying they're all treated equally. So I guess maybe that's just a bigger conversation.
I understand where you're coming from, but that's what we had, what we started out with.
Um, no, we didn't like, no, none of those things was like, um, actually mandatory. Uh, we all volunteer for committees because we want to do a good service and do things, but you actually don't have to or didn't have to in the old policy and neither were, uh, conferences. You don't have.
Understood. I, I totally understand. And, and I guess I'm of the belief that when you um, come forward for this particular type of a, a role, you understand that those are, um, requirements of that role. And you choose as, as a personal choice, as a counselor, what you can fill and what you can't. And if you're unable to complete your, um, your role to, um, that, that's entirely, um, a personal choice. So people need to really sit down and look before they decide that they're going to run for as a counselor, if they're going to be able to, um, fit that into their lifestyle.
May I?
C A O, um, with regards to the compensation review, I know we've talked about the number of meetings, uh, potentially not being correct or an accurate reflection of what was expected of us. Were the conferences um, factored into those counts as well?
Um, Madam Chair, I did reach out to Mr. White. Without doing a pile of analysis, um, part of his response was, look, if you're a county councillor in any of those counties, you're probably just as busy. You know, um, there's, might be a couple that are less busy, might be a couple that are more. On average, if you're a county councillor in Alberta, you're relatively the same busyness in most places. And that, that's the premise. Like, they all attend R M A. Some of them, their entire council is on A S P, so they might all attend A S P. Um, you say this, you see the same folks at all your conferences. So they probably all attend the same things you do. And that's the general gist of it. It's same as staff. He didn't check with all the other counties and see are the, are, are staff busier than everybody else? Look, a public works foreman is just as busy here as he is in all those counties. So I think there's a general assumption, county councillors are busy everywhere and it's generally the same busyness. Some might be a little more, some might be a little less.
And I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I was just wondering for the current model, if he had factored that in, like the per diems and whatnot, expenses allocated to attending those conferences included or? But probably not.
Terms of counting it, um, so the model with, uh, salary and per diem, um, I'd have to double check, but I think it would include it. So, I mean, I think under his recommendation, and I would think that those would count, generally, how, uh, councillors are paid a per diem when they attend conferences, um, if you're on that system. Um, if you're on the per diem system. So I think he's done it both ways and he said either way is absolutely fair, absolutely fair in the marketplace.
Thank you. Sorry, coming back to the policy amendments, Councilor Holland, so you wanted to see a new one rewritten? So the motion was to direct administration to draft a new elected officials remuneration and expenses policy incorporating recommendation one A plus mileage from the compensation review to be reviewed at an upcoming committee of the whole or council meeting. Reeve Hall.
I'd like to just remind us all that in the analysis that we've had done, since we seem to put a lot of stock in what everybody else is doing and making our own decisions, the, the language in the report that both models are valid, although the salary and per diem model is slightly more prevalent in the municipal market. I would like to propose an amendment to the motion that the job rate ratio be recalculated to a hundred and two percent across the board. And to delete the words or council in the main motion, because I think until we see the policy, this is something we need to have time to look at and talk through to make sure it reflects what we truly want. Cause we're, we're asking for a wholesale rewrite and I think that the appropriate place is for it to come back to committee of the whole.
Conversation on the amendment while I'm trying to write it down.
For me to show you what I wrote?
Yes, please.
The job rate ratio is a hundred and two percent across the board. Should be recalculated to be a hundred and two percent across the board and delete the words or council.
Okay. Are there any comments on the amendment? Of the mo- original motion to uh, recommend that one A be recalculated to target a job rate ratio of a hundred and two percent for all councillors and further to delete the words or council. Can you use your microphone, Councilman?
Meaning or council like on in the?
So it would come to a committee of the whole meeting for discussion, not just go straight to council.
Because we're changing the policy.
Because it's a new policy.
Good.
Councilor Holland.
Thank you. Um, I'd have to vote against the amendment. Um, the reason being, um, on this one is we're making changes again, um, outside of the recommendation from, um, this particular report. And as well, we have gone around and around and around so many times. Once again, um, it's almost feels like we're dragging our heels for something that's inevitable and should be happening anyway. Um, a policy, there's no reason why we can't have the healthy debate in council. Um, should it come there that the committee of the whole, we can't make any decisions that are going to carry through on that day, council they will. And we keep dragging our feet and dragging our feet and extending this when it should have been done last month.
Uh, sorry, Council Captain, could you have your hand up? I thought I seen something watch on the screen, but.
No, it's, there's a lot of glitching.
Okay. Councilor Cromwell, did you? So Reeve Hall has made a motion to amend the motion to uh, have recommendation one A be recalculated to target a job rate ratio of a hundred and two percent for all councillors and further to delete the words or council from the original motion. On the adoption of that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. That motion is defeated three to five. And the original motion to direct administration to draft a new elected officials remuneration and expenses policy incorporating recommendation one A plus mileage from the compensation review to be reviewed at an upcoming committee of the whole or council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a question. All in favor? Post.
Nay.
That motion passes five to three. Councilor Cromwell.
Thank you. And again, in fairness of our colleague who is not here, like to make a motion to direct administration to have improved consulting edit the number of meetings from twenty four to forty four to include committee of the whole policy review and budget of finance meetings and to bring this back to the same meeting or meeting prior to the presentation of the new remuneration policy. And I will send that to you. So you have my wording.
The meeting count.
And I believe in starting the conversation that would uh, still be fair to all the colleagues around the room to have that looked at. I don't think it's going to be a huge difference in changing that number of meetings to the bottom figure, but to be fair to everyone in the room and those that are not present, uh, to have that looked at and, and understood fully before implementation of a new policy.
At the same. Okay. So to direct administration to have improved consulting amend the report. Uh, the meeting count in the report to forty four meetings to include council, committee of the whole, budget and finance and policy review to be presented at the same meeting as the new elected officials remuneration and expenses policy draft. Councilor Holland.
Thank you. Um, I would vote in a proposition, um, just based on what we had already discussed. And the fact that, um, it's not going to make a whole hill of beans difference. We've already been informed by the, uh, writer of the report that, um, it's based on the same, pretty much the same workload. That's why he chose those municipalities. So it's not going to make a whole hill of beans other than waste more time and more, uh, finances to get this done. So I have to vote in opposition.
Any further comment? Councilman.
I'm just wondering like what, what does that do? Like, like, like what? Changing the me, changing the number on the bottom. What, what, what does it do? Like, is it? I don't, I don't, I don't get it.
Madam, Madam Chair, I don't, maybe this will help or maybe it won't. Um, on page one twenty of the agenda package, and so it's page thirteen of Mr. White's report. He includes two tables that include what he thinks is the actual number of meetings that you truly attend. So what he's saying is there's twenty four meetings of all the counties that he looked at generally, just council meetings. And there's a pile of extra meetings. And he acknowledges that. Um, eh, so it's absolutely public out there that, um, there's a lot, there's a lot more than twenty four meetings a year for your honorarium salary, whatever. Mr. White acknowledges that. And I think he, he took the current committee appointments um, that we calculated and I confirmed with Reeve Hall, I think, uh, did a little work with him to confirm that these numbers appeared to be right and he's included them for the additional meetings. So I just wanted to point that out.
You mean the workload is more than just the ten hours a week, uh, months that we were told originally? Sorry, Councilor Capitanic.
Just wanted to say thank you for that, um, C A O. Uh, I do, um, like, uh, Councilor Cromwell's motion. If for any reason that, uh, again, I'll go to council of the future, can, can see an actual number written down because they mean, even myself may not, uh, have read that report in its entirety. And I'm sure that people that are running in the future will and they'll see twenty four meetings. And you know, though it does say, oh, you know, it's balanced and there's all this extra workload to have that in black and white, I think would be beneficial for everyone in the future. Maybe not in this exact report, but in, in some sort of, again, maybe it's written into the policy, like exactly what meetings there are that you are expected to attend so that everybody us and in the future sees that. So I'm not proposing an amendment to the motion, but just that that information could be made more clear for everyone.
Thank you. Any further comments on the motion? Councilor Cromwell.
Thank you. To my friends across the table. I understand what you mean. You're maybe not going to change anything, but as Council Captain said, to have a more appropriate, more realistic number recorded, even if that changes the bottom dollar by a dollar, the fact is to have proper things recorded and to paint a better picture. And we're asking to bring it back to the same meeting or meeting previous. We're not asking to delay it any further. I think in fairness across the room, it would be a very fair motion to support. And you owe me at least one today.
We don't tell others how to vote. Councilman.
Okay, well, let's, let's let the rabbit out of the bag here. So we're going to go back to the consultant and what is it going to cost us? Is he going to charge us for more information or, because if he's going to charge us for more information, we can probably fill out our own report. So.
Madam Chair, I'll have to check. If, if you just want one number changed, then we're directing him to change his report.
Yeah.
Um, we're telling him to change a number. I mean, I don't, should he go back and change all the other counties then? Cause they all, they all say twenty four. So should he go back and calculate all the extra meetings that the other counties do too, which is going to look an awful lot like ours. They're all busy. Everyone's got the same busyness. And I think, I, I don't know, I could check with them and find out if he would just change it without basically directing council to change his report. It's supposed to be an independent report.
Councilor Holland.
I think we need to stop ignoring our C A O's advice. He's emailed it to us. He's pointed it out in the report that the numbers are there. Let's respect that and move on.
Then you, no further comments on the adoption of the motion to direct administration to have improved consulting amend the meeting count in the report to forty four meetings to include council, committee of the whole, budget and finance and policy review to be presented at the same meeting as the new elected officials remuneration policy draft. Oh, boy.
Same meeting or meeting prior.
Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Bales two to six. Defeated. Now be in order to take a recess for ten minutes. And then we'll come back at the next item on our agenda is item seven point one communications audit. This is on page one twenty six of your agenda package. Uh, Director.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to speak on behalf of this, uh, since the communications coordinators, coordinator, coordinators away. Uh, today we have a report before you that we just want you to receive for information. Um, some time ago, council through the strategic plan, uh, wanted a communication strategy and our communications coordinator had developed one. But throughout, uh, reading it, we realized that we're making some assumptions on what our readership is like as far as the paper goes, the, what our audience is looking at, whether it's the website, social media, whether we're missing something such as, such as radio. So we're proposing, uh, an audit. Now the money is already in the budget. There's already some public engagement money in there and we do have some additional funds. Um, so we're proposing that we use this little bit of money in there and just do an audit through a third party, uh, facilitator, just do a survey, bring back a report, um, and then that, that report will will help us develop a more comprehensive, uh, strategic, strategy for communications. So today we're just looking for just for to receive it for information.
Thank you. Council Chamsik.
I love this idea. I'm a firm believer in letting, getting it done and, uh, hundred percent for the recommendation.
Council Chamsik is moving to receive the report for information. Council Cromwell, you were, had your hand up next.
Well, thank you. I was going to, uh, recommend to county council direct administration to begin the process of conducting an external and internal communications audit to support the creation of a strategic communication plan. So a little bit different than the recommended as worded. But I was going to make the, the first option under bullet nine.
I believe since it's in the budget, they don't need us to correct them. Yep. Counselor Holland? Thought you were waving at me next. Nope. Okay. Thank you. Are there any further comments on this item? Seeing none, Council Chamsik has moved to receive the report for information. Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried eight now. And next item is item seven point two, collection of general accounts receivable policy and procedure. Director, did you want to address this one as well?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, so before you is a draft policy and procedure to address, um, how we receive our accounts. Um, and I think, uh, Reeve Hall at the last, uh, committee, the whole meeting asked about our process and, uh, We typically just send statements, uh, monthly statements on a regular basis. And sometimes people pay and sometimes they don't. Now we have some policies in place, but they're, they're, they're pretty complex and quite honestly, they're, they could be quite costly. If we're asking, uh, solicitors to, to deal with this, it's going to be. Uh, quite expensive. So, uh, one of the practices in other municipalities is to use a collections agency and we're proposing that we do that. And our procedure speaks to how we go about doing that. So, um, we talk about sending letters, uh, to the, the accounts and then after ninety days. Um, they're advised that a collections agency will be contacting them. And I can tell you from personal experience, it has been successful. In, in taking that, um, putting it in the hands of the collections agency rather than us chasing. The same accounts over and over and over. And the ones that we've exhausted all of our efforts, then we would just write them off, but council has to be, uh. Uh, has to approve some of the, the write offs over five hundred dollars or, uh, will bring a report on a regular basis just to let council know. Which accounts we were writing off. And then, uh, Reeve Hall alluded to this earlier about, uh, continuing, um. Providing services to people who are in arrears. This, uh, policy and procedure. Basically, we don't provide him any more further services until they clear their accounts.
Thank you. Reeve Hall.
Thanks for, um, moving this forward. I, I think, uh, I had a couple of comments. One of them, um, really is so we've, you've given us a procedure which is, uh, appreciated for knowledge. It's my understanding council doesn't approve procedures. Those are approved by the C A O. And I think. That on the general policy, it, it could use a little bit more. Work, uh, specifically to clarify the responsibility of the C A O to ensure that a procedure is in place. And to define the reporting expectations to council so that it's not just we will, but. It's expected that every quarter there'll be a, an update or every something. And somewhere, and I, I might've missed it when I read it, uh, but I, I do think we need to specifically. Say, um, and it might not be sixty days, but I, I would pick sixty. Any accounts created in sixty days in arrears, we cease provisional services. And thereafter they move, uh. Into a prepaid only status for eternity. Uh, we are, um, I checked the sign when I, uh, came in this morning. It says Athabasca County. It's not Athabasca Bank. Uh, we are not in the banking business. If you can't keep your stuff up to date, uh, we're not, you know. Get your credit at the bank, not at the county table. So I, I think. That will help to reduce the administrative burden of chasing these things down. And I absolutely support the idea of, uh. Of, you know, some clear communications upfront and then send it off to collections and, and get it, get it done. I know that, you know, the grocery store doesn't take credit. I, I don't know why we would on. Any of this, this stuff either.
Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Uh, I actually wholeheartedly disagree with that and I do not believe that shutting services off after sixty days. Is correct. And I completely disagree with the prepay for eternity statement. We are not a business. We are. A organization of the people for the people. And yes, there are people that are in arrears. And you know what? Let's try the. The collections and, and get some traction that way. But. Putting a. That shall not pass tattoo across somebody's forehead. For being sixty-one days in arrears, uh, hello, look at the world, look at the economy and remember that we are humans working for the people that. Pay for us to be here. And let's. Not forget that this is not our bank account, but the people's bank account that we take care of. I think going to. A collection agency is a wonderful idea, Madam Director, and I thank you for bringing that up in the policy. But I would never be able to support. Shutting somebody down at day sixty-one. And saying for the rest of your life, Mister thirty-two-year-old man that lost your job and need to, uh, fill up your sister. That for the rest of your, your seventy days living in this county, you're going to prepay for your water. I will never get behind that.
Right. Could I just clarify that, um, the utilities? That are direct to residences are excluded. And we have corporate accounts that are doing business with the county that, um. Expose us to considerable risk. And this, most of this policy applies to that. And.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you. I also struggle, uh, wholeheartedly with, um. Cutting people off. That from able, being able to obtain water for that matter. Um, we have a, a society situation right now where people are struggling and they're struggling hard. Um. It's not fair, uh, that we would absolutely. Cut them off to prepaid only or you're not getting, um, I totally disagree with that and think that the hardships that are already placed on people. Now, uh, we don't need to add to it.
Further comments? And Counselor Capitany.
Um, I agree with, um, Counselor Holland. I definitely think that mixing, um. I wanna say utilities, uh, but water ideally, um. As a punishment for not paying your taxes is. Just. It's just not something that makes sense in my mind. Um, we've talked about the county not being in the business of having utilities. And maybe that's where we need to be. We shouldn't. Be focusing on how we're going to use them as a weapon, but more so how we're going to get out of. Being responsible for them. And so I wouldn't agree with having those two things in the same motion.
Can I get a clarification on where do we get to? Cutting off your, your water bill when you're not paying your taxes?
Well, I just, I, sorry, I understood, uh, cutting off services and I was trying to think of what services we provide. So we provide water. Could you, uh, mention other services?
The policy that administration has drafted includes a statement, as such, this policy does not apply to the collection of utility or tax arrears.
Okay, I apologize that I misheard, um, Reeve Hall. What was, what were you, um, specifically saying that they would have to? Be cut off of and then prepay for? I'm confused, sorry.
Um, th- this is anybody who doesn't fall in the utility or tax arrears. So if we're, um, looking at, you know. Tasha's oil field water hauling and, uh, like those guys should. We, it's not the county's job. It's not the job of our residents here. I, the statement was made, this is not our personal bank account. You're right. And. You know, businesses should not be financing their business on the backs of our ratepayers. And, uh, if you're selling water in a, in an industrial capacity, you should be able to pay for it and. You've got sixty days. If that's not enough to, like, credit is a privilege, not a right. And if, if, uh, our, our job is to look after our ratepayers and their funds and to be good stewards of them. And so if we're, if we have stuff going out through the tank loaders and there are bills that are getting out of control. Um, I, I don't know what the cutoff point is to say, oh, well. We just keep. Keep letting the service flow. Like, there's gotta be a point where you say. Um, it has to be paid.
Um, I. I don't know how I feel about sixty days and then cut everything off. Um, but I do think that we kinda have to have a policy that protects. The county's purse as well. And. We can't expect, um, one person to have to pay and then the next two never have to pay. And maybe to me it would be, um, a. The ceasing of services after ninety days. Or switch to prepay unless a payment plan has been arranged. I mean, to me, if you're making an effort to pay that. That goes a long ways for me. Um, I don't think that sixty days is necessarily reasonable. I think ninety days would be. A more reasonable number for me just because. You know, sixty days, for some people, that's only one or two paychecks. And if something big comes up, that's. Ninety days to try and make at least a payment plan and get something arranged seems a little bit more reasonable. I, I understand not letting it go forever and ever, but. I don't, I don't know about just cutting it off. Also, if they, uh, if they are trying to make payments.
Maybe there's a dollar value in there too.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you. I've been thinking more about it. Ninety days is more palatable for sure. Um, however, when we're talking about some of these commercial. Uh, accounts, they could be a situation where that commercial person for water, for example, is delivering to a whole pile of other people. Who knows what happened in their business? For sixty days, um, that maybe they had to buy a new truck and they're struggling. Who knows, right? But then if you're looking at. An oil well, that's a little different than a commercial water hauler who's delivering, uh, private to private residences. So I'm not sure how you would distinguish it or how you could even attempt to, um, put into a policy commercial and not identify. What type of commercial you're referring to being that, you know, private people could end up being hurt by that as well. So. I don't know. It's something that ninety days, like you say, is more palatable, but. Payment plan? Yep, definitely. But yeah, cutting off, no.
Counselor Chamsik and then Counselor Cromwell.
I agree with the ninety days. Uh, most things oil field especially are a minimum of ninety days up to that one twenty day for payment. Um. And I love the idea of a payment plan being on there, but, uh, definitely things happen in our lives that. Things can come up and we need to also notice that. We are humans too.
Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Uh, firstly through the chair to Madam Director. I've read this and I've read it and I've read it again. Where does it? Help me and show me please, where does it say that this is for commercial entities only?
Uh, uh, through the chair, this is for anybody who has general accounts receivable. So it could be, uh, truck fill, it could be campground, it could be, uh, fire. Uh, cost recovery. So it's not specifically just commercial. It's just anybody who owes us money through our general accounts receivable.
For clarification, it could be myself for not paying my water bill. For two months for whatever reason then, based on what you're just saying.
Through, through the chair, uh, through the truck bill. Yes, if you are in arrears of your truck fill and you're not paying your truck fill bills. Then yes, uh, then you, you're definitely, you're in arrears and you would be, we would be following up with you to make sure that you, you pay and then we can at least clear that account.
Okay, perfect. So then we are back to. Uh, shutting off water for individuals when they get behind on their bill for whatever part of life may come in. And as this is written, I can absolutely not support that. Um, I believe ninety days would be far better to begin the process, but absolutely not going with a cutoff and a pay. Back to my very first analogy of the thirty-two-year-old person with the. Pay for life tattooed on their forehead. I will not get behind that.
Council men's or Council girl like? Counselor Capitany.
I'm good.
Reeve Hall.
We're going to add in some clarifications around, uh, the responsibility of the C A O to ensure there's a procedure in place and that there are defined reporting expectations. Cause really council creates a policy, we direct where it goes. And then the C A O can. Shake it out. But I also, uh, you know, would challenge any of you to not pay your U F A bill or go to buy law and see how many days you can go without. Sorry, Save On Foods, without paying your grocery bill. It doesn't work.
And again, I will say to me, there's a big difference between not making any payments versus just not being able to pay it off. To me, I understand people not being able to pay it off. But if you're attempting to make a payment within ninety days. Then I think your, then your service should continue.
I will agree, exceptions, Mark.
Then let's bring back a draft that has that written in there properly in a different way that we can look at.
But that's what we're trying to do is make amendments to direct administration to amend it, bring it back.
So how it, how it's written right now, I would like to see them then take back the conversation we've had and come up with a more. Appropriately friendly, and I know that's not probably the right word, draft this by law to review. At a later committee of the whole meeting.
Counselor Gerlick, you look like you're pondering. Comment there.
I guess I'm just thinking of give an inch, take a mile. I don't know. We had. We had boilers working in the oil field for a few, several years and. And, uh, we didn't get a drop of water anywhere unless we paid for it in advance. Because we could be. Five hundred miles away in ninety days. And who wants to go chasing somebody? It's. I, I just don't think it's that big of a deal. People should pay their bills. Like. If you're in a business and you're. Like, who gives you the commodity that you're selling or moving or transporting and says, we'll give you ninety days to pay for it to. They probably take it out and sell it and put the cash in your pocket that same month, by the end of the month or whatever. If you're running a business, you should be able to run a business. I don't have a lot of sympathy, sorry.
And I add that this, this doesn't just apply to water. We focused around water, but it provides to all the other services we provide as well. So. And, and I don't, you know, know in depth what other things create invoices out of the county, but, um, you know, we, we do spraying for people. And if we have someone who's not paying for their spray, should we again say, well, I didn't pay last year, but times are tough. Let's spray their stuff again, like. I, I can tell you from experience, when you say to a client, look, you're a little behind. You gotta get. Either a payment plan in place and, and I think having a reasonable system of. An arrangement. If there's a plan, sure. Then, then we can accommodate stuff, but. But to just say there's no end to, to, to things is a problem. And maybe also in here, we need to talk about a dollar value. You know, if somebody's twenty-five dollars behind on their water bill because they went to Arizona for three months. That, that's not the same thing as when they're twenty-five thousand dollars behind because. They're doing whatever and selling water and it is not our problem. If a commercial, like when you're a commercial enterprise and you sell, you take a product from us and resell it. It's not our problem whether they get paid. U F A doesn't care whether I get paid for the work I do outside of this office or not. They want their fuel bill paid. And if I phone them and said, boys, tough month, I'm not paying you. Well, I, I wouldn't be buying my fuel there the next day. There's all kinds of reasons that, like, we're talking about governance of other people's money. There, there's no banking experts here. We, we need to be careful. And thoughtful and create some. Make sure we don't have the unintended consequences. Like, I think Counselor Gerlick and I once talked about somebody who was away and they had a nasty letter because they missed a single payment or. Show us sort that out. And maybe a dollar value is, needs to be in there too. You know, if the bill's over, pick a number that's reasonable, two hundred and fifty dollars or something.
Uh, Counselor Holland.
Thank you. I think it's pretty clear in here, uh, unpaid invoices over a hundred dollars will be forwarded to a collections agency over ninety days in arrears. Like, we've got the, um, means to, to collect, so.
That's in the procedure though, not in the policy.
Well. They'll follow that procedure, right? Yeah, they will follow that procedure. So that's on page one thirty-four, uh, three point one. So. The fail safe is there really, um. For any unpaid invoices over a hundred bucks. I think it's, I think the policies and procedures are great.
Any further? Comments on this one? Motion coming out of this item. Very thought too. Um. So the recommended motion was to direct administration to bring the collection of general accounts receivable policy and procedure to the July twenty-fifth regular council meeting for approval. Uh, do we, are we ready to send this to council or do we want to ask administration to amend that policy first and then bring it back here? Reeve Hall.
I, I think we should bring it back and have further discussion on it, uh, but also just to reiterate, council doesn't approve procedures. Those are the C A O's broad. So. And, and that's why I would, you know, circle back to adding lines that say it's responsibility of the C A O to ensure that there are procedures in place to. Fall off on the collections or some language like that. And then define the reporting expectations to council. Cause that's the only way council guarantees that we get. Information back.
So you're looking to make a motion to the direct administration to amend the draft collection of general account receivable policy and bring it back to the next committee of the whole meeting?
Bring it to a future committee of the whole meeting to give them the flexibility to do it at the next one or the one after, the one after.
Comments? Seeing none? Um, the adoption of that motion then? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Uh, so the count is five and three and that motion is adopted. Next item on our agenda is seven point three, which was an R F D submitted by Reeve Hall for a council discussion. About the role of our C M P in ensuring public safety and well-being. Reeve, did you want to address this item?
Um, mostly it, it is entirely here to have, uh. Um, mostly, it, it is entirely here to have uh counselors share their thoughts on uh. Uh, the questions that are here, where are the R C P having success from our perspective? What is, what do we think is their critical role in ensuring public safety and well-being? And uh do we have any comments on the current community engagement, crime reduction strategies or current efforts? And then any other experiences or initiatives that may be relevant? As outlined in the paper, and I'm here to listen, make notes.
Does anybody have any comments or? Topics, uh Counselor Chamsik.
Well. I don't know. By this, I look at it as uh they're here quarterly. And uh very much appreciated. I mean, I know our town hall events this last prior year was probably more ill attended than. In the past so far. Um, our C M P members have been invited out to. Um, different areas, different groups and stuff to be able to gain some of that uh feedback as well. And if they really needed anything, have they reached out to you to ask for this information? No.
Yes, that's why it's here.
Um. I don't know what else they can really do. I mean, I mean, I don't really receive a lot of uh requests for more town halls. Or anything. I don't know about any of the other areas, but definitely I keep, try to keep them open to anything that invited as, as a counselor that. Uh, their presence is definitely always very welcome, I think, in most of our communities.
The only feedback I continually receive would be, we need to see more, more patrols of our rural area, more. More attention to the outlying areas versus the more urban center. And that's no different for Boyle detachment or Athabasca detachment or Lackavish or Redwater or wherebe it. Uh, it's a lot harder to get patrols out when you're running smaller crews in the evening, weekend, nighttime. And that's when Joe Bad Guy likes to come out and play on evening, weekend and nighttime when people are not around. So I will always advocate for a stronger rural presence and a more. You say the word thick, but thick is not right. A uh more robust presence on those times that we're seeing less members on the road.
And that Reeve Hall, just to clarify, this is for the Athabasca Detachment's community appreciation barbecue that they host annually.
That is correct, and you are all invited to attend the Athabasca uh barbecue that is on the nineteenth of. July from noon until two.
Noon to two. July nineteenth.
I think the uh.
Counselor Menz.
Positive, positive end is them reaching out, getting more into the schools. I, I, I'd like to hear that. That they're out there communicating with the kids and that, that's where it starts first. Uh, grandson got to go in, in kindergarten, got to go for a field trip to the R C M P barracks and. Hang out in a jail cell for a while. So, so it's uh, you know, gets better understanding of why he doesn't want to be in there. So. It's uh, you know, and even, even, even reaching out and, and talking to him in, in high school and that. I think it's a great. I always go back to the dare program that my kids were in. And it was a, it was a, an amazing program to, to be. To be looked at, so. I like, I like that. That's a, is a positive for them.
I'm glad your grandson got that as a takeaway because when my daughter went, all I heard about was the cute police officer that let her out of the jail cell.
And in thirteen years, this recording will show up to haunt her for that. So thank you very much.
Along with many other documents, don't worry. Hey, are there, is there any other feedback that we can give Reeve Hall?
What, what other things are unaddressed? That last question.
So challenges and opportunities within our community? Uh, Counselor Holland.
And it, as difficult as this staffing is always a concern, always a concern. And I know how hard they work to keep it up to um the levels that they need to. But that is always a concern. Um, and the outlying regions that are um, that don't have a, a detachment. Um, that are taking away from some of the other areas that we hear complaints about all the time. Um, just an advocacy for um those other areas to have a detachment of.
I think the challenges is, is that is, is, is staffing. Because, you know, and, and, and the other thing is to celebrate their wins um more through communication. It's, it's always good to hear that they have, you know, from one traffic stop, boom, all of a sudden they've, they've. They, they've got so much paraphernalia off the streets and stuff like that. I think putting that on there. But the staffing is a huge challenge because they're never at the right place at the right time, right? It's, and, and they hear about that. Well, why? Or how long did it take them to get there? Well, you know what? They're, they're busy and they, they don't have the staff that, that can come there that quick. I would say so. It's, it's a challenge. That's a huge challenge for them.
And so some of the audience is obviously going to be the detachment members for the, for the, the comments. So I um, I think. You know, the staffing issues we recognize are, are concerns. It's not something the average member in the detachment is going to hear from. So the other things I'm hoping to, you know, get from you are there. Any comments you can make about how you think they're, what their critical role is in ensuring public safety and well-being? And I. Some of it I've got, you know, the increased patrols matter, the visibility in schools matter. Is that enough? Like I.
If you have any further comments or something that pops up tonight, please feel free to email it to Reeve Hall. I see all of us, our fellow counselors, because. It might be one of those topics that it's just been a long day and maybe when you're driving home that you.
And I also said to uh the staff sergeant, when I, he called and I spoke to about this, I said, I think this is sort of uh. In reverse, you should be telling us about what can be done to help reduce crime. Like, it's not really a uh.
The, the other positive would be uh the, the town halls, like going to the town halls to, to uh grassland and, and. Wandering river and, and uh. And boil and that, 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 you know, where it's more personable, they're actually up there talking. No, no, like, like the town halls that they have for PC, he, he has a town hall and, and, and a bunch of people come in there and they could ask them questions and talk. Athabasca County's there with the C P Os and, and, and all of them. And I, and I think that's a great. You know, people, people are able to voice their, their opinions and, and stuff like that right to them. Um, the town halls that are on the, on the, like via Zoom or whatever, or through the phone. I'd rather see it in person. You just get a better. Yeah, but I've been to a couple of them and, you know, I think they go over really good, so.
On, on the same note, they show up, you know, at the senior symposiums and those are kind of like a town hall only with a very select group and. And, you know, I've seen the reaction there and it's, it gives people a chance to ask their questions.
Well, and I guess it never hurts for them to reach out to those eight societies and it has to be a delegation once a year, twice a year or whatever as well.
Okay. So coming out of this item, can, would somebody like to make a motion to accept this as information? Counselor Menz? Any further discussion? Seeing none? We'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried eight now. Next item is item seven point four, which is follow up to the M C S net delegation from earlier today. Somebody like to make a motion to receive the presentation for information? Counselor Gerlick? Was there any further comments? This item, Counselor Holland.
Thanks. Um, I really appreciate the information that was brought forward today and, and a bit more of an, an understanding on how. Fiber is brought to our community and, and that uh these companies are able, once it's identified by the, the um federal government that. Speeds are where they are. Um. That they can now bid on these particular fiber installs, um et cetera. However, it still leaves quite a gap. Um. That we see more so, I think, um in more remote rural areas as, as these lines of fiber are following. Major highways, et cetera, and um going into some other populated areas. Um, I guess where I'm trying to get at more than anything is, do we? Okay, here's an example. The national broadband map, for example, will not update all of our. Um, vendors that, that we are able to buy from. Um. Because they haven't finished at doing a symposium on some of them and determine whether or not, I guess symposium is the wrong word, but. That's not the right word. But anyway, they're, they're doing a study and these guys have to, to bring the information forward. They're not getting all of the information forward. So the national broadband map is not actually up to date and current with all of the right information. They mentioned that that's going to happen in November is when they do their next update, but they don't expect the reporting to come back to be able to update it accurately. So we're still lagging behind in some of these areas where we're relying on. Federal government to provide the information and, and, and get us going in these directions, but. We actually need to advocate more for that or um add to our own information, what is actually available here. For example, Starlink is, is one of those. Um, they will not update it on that broadband map until they get all the proper reporting in. So when people are looking to come here and they don't see that, that it's available here, it, it becomes a negative for, for our uh community. So as much as I'm loving seeing the, the fiber and like, as he mentioned, you know, the bidding that's going on that, are we looking um? In a wholesome way in our community to say, are we covered or are we not? Do we know where we're covered? Do we know where we're not covered? And the uh fiber and the internet seems to be on a pretty good control and, 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 and happening, but we're still lagging majorly behind in cell, cell service. So where do we go from here? Um, as we, as he mentioned, their tower, towers are not tall enough to add to them for um cell service. So where do we go from here to actually look at not only the broadband, but the cell service that makes our community a hell of a lot better than what it is right now? And for economic development purposes, um people who can't get cell service five miles, ten miles out of town, it's a problem. So um I'm hoping that we can be revisiting the grant um that we applied for last fall that we didn't get or maybe possibly another grant. To figure out how we can get a study in and say, okay, this is what we have, this is what we don't have, this is what we need, and this is where. And the sooner the better uh for economic development as far as I'm concerned. So thank you very much for the invite for the M C S net. Um, that was really good information to have, but I think we're still lagging behind in our own advocating for our own community.
C A O, is that something we could potentially include in a future N red grant application or?
Uh, yeah, we've uh, uh, Madam Chair, we've applied for it be before uh no one locally got lucky with N red last year. Is our understanding, so um. We certainly try again and so we want to introduce that as a project again for twenty twenty five budget consideration, then. Then we could do that.
Thank you. Was there any further comments about the M C S net delegation? Seeing none? Counselor Gerlick has made a motion to receive the delegation as information. Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Eight now. Would now be in order to receive a motion to go into closed session, Counselor Chamsik. Made a motion to go into closed session at three oh one. Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried? Call the question. All in favor? Motion carried. Seven and O.